Can be on standby.
Okay. Are we, yeah, you're good to go.
Okay, sorry.
How many difficulties did we have today? No, you're fine.
Perfect. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Axerson County Commission meeting for Tuesday, May ninth. I'd like to call the meeting to order and if you judge me, or judge me, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Probably judge me too.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. I want to see everybody in the public lines. We will move on, reading an approval of the minutes. Did you guys have a chance to read?
Yeah, I read those and I would move to approve.
All second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Perfect. I'm gonna back up as it's just ten oh one. Did you have a public comment? Did you want to join for a public comment?
Um, I could, but I don't.
Okay.
Do I need to?
No, I was just asking because I was looking on Zoom and I passed that part, so I was just thinking.
No, you're fine.
Perfect.
I'm just here to listen.
Okay. Alright, so I had put this on the agenda a couple of weeks ago. And actually kind of wanted to visit with you guys about the agenda. Because I know that, like hindsight, sitting here today, I wish I would have been last. Because we let our department heads come out and get their business done and then we could have talked about this piece. But again, I put it on two weeks ago, so I had time to prepare and get you guys the notes. So I was wondering what your thoughts are on switching up maybe the agenda just a bit to put, like new business with department heads first? And then they can come and we can do their business and then after that do kind of commission business? Cause we'll be here.
Right.
And then that way.
They're already here.
Yeah, and because right now, like for instance, Brian asked me this morning at the courthouse. You know, he's scheduled for twelve ten and he's gonna keep working at the courthouse until he has to break away. He's like, hey, if there's any chance I could go early, let me know. But I think just logistically, it gets chaos to try to move people. And that was another thing at the KCCA, I learned that we move quickly sometimes. And like we try to guess on the timeline, which works, but we should really be sticking to those times, if at all possible for the public. So like if the public sees, something on here that they want, that they want to come here, the treasurer's office updated twelve ten, and we're running an hour ahead of schedule. We have been historically, I've been just, we've just been going.
Just, yeah.
But really, we need to kind of keep in line with those timelines. So that's why I thought if we had our department heads that come here remotely from the courthouse or wherever first, if you guys would be okay with that?
I'm fine.
And just like kind of, we could allocate ten to noon for them, you know, and then, or ten to one for that, and then put our stuff at the end. But just kind of wanted to share that with you. And see your thoughts, cause.
That's fine. I don't know how that will be for the clerk to develop that agenda because, when, if you want to be penciled in and you want to be last, I mean, you may not know your actual time until everybody else fills in ahead of time. So I don't know how that will work for them to, develop that and set a time for other entities that are maybe in between.
Yep. I'm definitely being mindful of the clerk's office and want to work with them one-on-one, but I didn't want to do anything without discussing with you two to make sure if the clerks and myself feel like we can, tweak this a bit to make it more efficient for our department heads, that you guys will be okay with that.
I'm fine with it. I think it might take a little bit of working with the clerk's office and see if they are.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm mindful of what, you know, it's hard to set a time when it's gonna be flowing and maybe not, the time's not specified until after. I don't know. It could make more work.
Yep. No, I just wanted to make sure you guys would be okay with that. Alright, so the first thing then was my recap of the Kansas County Commission Association meeting. I attended the forty-seventh annual KCCA Spring Conference in Hayes, Kansas, April twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh. I know you guys had scheduling conflicts and couldn't make it. So I just wanted to provide a time to share all the documentation with you guys, which I had emailed to you with the agenda and then all the notes that I took. As well as some of the handouts. It was a great conference. I think it, in the future, if there's a chance for all of the commissioners to go in here firsthand, it's, just kind of re-energizes and refocuses on what we should be doing as a team at the top, like the three of us. Succession planning, the legislative update. The one key was that the food tax that they were, in limbo, did not pass, so we don't have to worry about that affecting our local sales tax. And.
I bet they try again next year.
You would be in tune with that probably. You think they'll.
Oh, I bet they will.
Go again.
We'll find out.
Did you guys have any questions from any of my notes or? I have. I think the other big thing to know how we stand together is, pushing the state to look at giving that local ad lorum tax reduction fund, giving that money back to us, along with the county and city revenue sharing. This is something well before me, that the state had taken back from counties. And they passed out a handout showing what that dollar amount looks like. And if we were to get it back in Axerson County, it's a total of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars, with both of those, so.
And I think when I was down there, they were talking about a couple of proposals where not maybe restoring all of it, but there were different percentages argued, so, but that'd be a hundred percent.
Yes, yep. Yeah, they outlined what each county in Kansas is, is missing out on based on that.
And what I, that may include, I'm not positive, that may include any cities or townships. That may, that may be the total revenue sharing.
Yes, yep, the total revenue sharing, they give a breakout. So the local ad lorum tax reduction fund was two hundred and eighty thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars. And then that county and city revenue sharing fund is four hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty.
Combined.
Yep.
And on that, I mean, I think that there's, and we discussed it just briefly earlier, the, mindset of the legislature seems to be, that county tax's bad and that, you know, they're gonna put, make us jump through hoops with the R and R hearings and things like that. When there's unfunded mandates that were required to fund, on one hand, they're taking resources like this away from us, the LAT, LAVTRF. And then still wanting us to fund like mental health and things like that. And us not raise our taxes, but, the state taxes can go up and down and at their whim, so, I mean, I, I think it's the, kind of the mindset of the legislature right now, the legislature that has me questioning some motives.
I would agree. Hey, I want to jump back to your notes. One thing I noticed you committed coming here on, and I've been hearing this off and on for two, three years, is the solar and wind energy issue. So, you know, what, what are people doing about that out there? Cause I know there's been a lot of battles over that.
Right. So yes, that was one of the major trends for commissioners currently. And it was interesting to be part of those discussions. I just listened really and understood, this is affecting zoned counties and counties that aren't zoned the same. That they have put moratoriums in some counties to be able to stop. Other counties are, it's your land, you do what you want. There's really, the stance isn't the same across the board, but it's more of being proactive with knowing, before it's too late, like so you can have those conversations of, it's coming, this is what, you know, how we can, what are the things we can protect ourselves from? We can protect ourselves from road damage, like things that affect the county directly from this. But really, there's.
So should we be proactive and start doing, make sure we have things in place? Or what have we done so far?
We really haven't done much.
Okay.
But I think we need to have a further discussion of where we all stand on that and what, what we think, you know, is the right path forward, depending on. Because that's the thing, is every commissioner has a different mindset of what that looks like and, you know, understanding the big picture, but I think the bottom line that every commissioner's feeling, from attending meetings and, and hearing it is, it's coming. So it's either figure it out and be proactive and get on board with how you can alleviate, the pain that is coming, or you're gonna be behind the times. So that's.
And I agree with that.
I mean, that, that's the feeling that I get from everything I've listened to. But some of the other major trends for commissioners, that aren't easy, but it is our job of looking at staffing levels for efficiencies, the budget, the R and R goal, looking at outsourcing and contracting positions in departments, cyber attacks, technology efficiencies, defining roles for each department and overall government. And just assessing your needs versus your wants. There was a ton of great information at this and, just having conversations with our elected officials more often on succession plans. And then I talked about the appraisal process of the trends and evaluations and budget adjustments to avoid tax increases for your constituents. A couple of big focuses for counties, which again, I felt like we were behind some of them from hearing what they have implemented was economic development and the broadband. How there, some counties have, you know, an economic development director that's communicating and looking at outlying areas and, and all of that too, cause they showed the growth charts of, you know, every county, are you gonna grow? What are the trends? What, what should you be looking at? So I found those presentations pretty interesting. Just talking about educating the public. What's our impact? How do we gaug, gauge, you know, our constituents, which today is probably gonna be a good day to talk about some of those things. And just really showing that, my personal opinion is since this first of the year and having you on board, it's just a different vibe that I feel as a commissioner, because there's three of us, we all have a different way of thinking, we might not agree, but we're collaborating, we're having better discussions together. And that's one of the things I've always been envious of with other counties is, they're a team, you know, they're the ones working together to kind of come up with the strategic planning, come up with, the decision-making, and then it goes down from there. And in the past, I, we, I haven't felt that, where we can really dig in and.
No, I think we all threw it really well.
No, it's, it's been great. And so that's one of the things that they drilled home, is great things happen in counties when commissioners lead together and everyone can have those hard conversations with one another and see each other's point of view, so that was. And then just some of the coma reminders, that the emails with all three of us are okay, as long as there's no interactive communication. So when we send out, just to keep us all in the know of scheduling and informational items, that that was okay. Procurement policy for making last-minute decisions, which I know that's on our to-do list, so that hit home for me. One of the things was we can, let's see. Oh, the interview panels with commissioners, that we hold those in special meaning executive session. And then it, it explained that it's my duty to review the agenda prior to publishing, which I did not know that either. I'm just in the same, you know, sequence of you guys, so that's something I wanted to visit with the clerk's office about. And then the violation of times on the agenda that I talked about.
What about this comment about capital reserve fund not in the budget, however, ten, fifteen, twenty percent, different numbers are a good idea, so could you clarify that?
Yep, and there it is. So yes, they were talking about, so on capital improvement plans, anything that has a life over five years or that costs over twenty-five thousand is a good idea to have, like on a plan. And plan and look at those fund balances. The capital reserve fund, they said you need to have a fund for, not rainy day, but kind of like something in case.
Contingency plan.
Yes, contingency plan, thank you.
The fourth thing is on that capital improvement plan, is, is money for those things? Are those tied together necessarily?
No.
Okay.
No, they're, they're separate. Because the capital reserve fund, is separate from the contingency. But the good idea was to have ten, fifteen, or twenty percent. In Butler County, the presenter, he was at seventeen percent. And they also encourage you to look at your total salaries and your total benefits as a whole, which I thought that was interesting because that helps with the COLA impact. When you look at it as a big number instead of per department, which per department's great for our budget discussions per department, but having that, that larger number is easier for the COLA impact and different things to the budget.
Percentage though of the capital reserve fund, it should be a percentage of what? Of the total budget or the budget without these special funds?
The total budget.
So the total with everything, okay.
Yeah. Which again, next Tuesday, we're going to that budget meeting, so I think this will probably be drilled into even more. But these are just things that I felt like bringing home would be. And then all of our policies. I mean, really having a policy in place where we have a debt policy, fund balance for a reserve policy, purchase and procurement policy, which we already know we have, we need to update. Just get a handle on the spending so that we, we know what's happening. And then they gave some resources, which I shared my notes with the finance director and HR as well, so that they have, cause some of this pertained to them. And best practices to switch your auditors every now and then, which I know we're doing RFP for ours, for next year, or for twenty-twenty-three audit. And then just, I mean, drilling down that, it's sometimes tough when we're doing our job internally, but the public holds us accountable, so we have to hold everybody else accountable in the organization. And then they talked about the revenue neutral rate. And gave definitions, how to calculate it. And went through, several other things, but I mean, they also gave budget calendar, which again, we'll probably get that on Tuesday, so that'll be helpful for us as far as knowing our dates and. I, I included the agenda too, so you could see who the speakers were, if you wanted to reach out to any of them. They all ended their presentations with like, if you have any questions, feel free, reach out to us, we're here to help.
There's a separate document there, I guess.
Yeah, so. Overall, great conference. I was happy to be, the KAC is always helpful, but being able to be with just commissioners, was very good, because it's like, okay, we have the same job, now we can talk about how, you know.
Relate, you know, one-on-one.
Yes, relate to, to one another very much. And everyone in the state is facing the same, many of the same challenges that we are, so everyone's valuations are up and, looking deficiencies was the word used often, so.
Good, sounds great.
Yeah.
I plan on going originally until.
I know.
Things change.
Yeah. So their KAC dates, that's one of the things, are you guys, I wanted to remind you of that. That's the first week of December, I believe. Were you guys able to make that? That's down by Wichita this year.
You said December?
Mm-hmm.
That was.
KAC?
I'm looking, oh, their website.
Zoomer fifth through seventh.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to remind you guys of that, so that, you can put that on your calendars if you can make that.
Is that?
It's in, yeah, they moved it to Wichita this year and also next year, I believe.
Yeah, high regency in the century two. Convention Center, that's what's happening. I would love to go, but. I'll be gone.
Okay.
I'll be in Hawaii, sorry.
Tough luck.
Sorry.
So will you move the commission meeting to Tuesday?
I think, I think I fly Wednesday.
So probably, cause everyone will be traveling and usually every office ends up, or most of the department heads end up going, so, that's probably something we should look at.
Actually, I'll be gone that day now.
We have moved that week's meeting up to Monday before, i-if that accommodated everyone, but.
Okay.
It'll be something we need to look at.
I'm, I may be back the day before that starts, so I may be able to go.
That'd be awesome.
Just realize that, those dates got changed on me, so yeah.
Okay. Oh, one of the things that kind of coincides with the coma that I didn't get clarification on, but I wanted to ask Pat, was on the workshop sessions after our regular meeting. So currently, we're set up for nine to ten for department heads, anybody that wants to come speak to us in a workshop setting. We're here until at least one, and then beyond that, we usually adjourn if we don't have anything else. If, if the three of us have time on a Tuesday, are we allowed to adjourn into a workshop to give our department heads more time if they need to come visit with us about, issues that we're still, still working out the details on?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, there's no problem.
And, and that would just be in the motion of adjournment. We're adjourning into a workshop at one o'clock. Is that?
Okay.
I'm asking.
Yeah, I think that's, that's okay. I'm, maybe give some thought about the way to phrase that, but. I mean, essentially what you're, what you're doing is you're stopping the Zoom broadcast but continuing the meeting, so it's still an open meeting, people would be allowed to come. So that, yeah, there's, there's nothing in the Open Meetings Act that would impact whether you could do that or not.
Okay. Yeah, we've just had department heads asking for more time than just that hour. Where there's things they're not, not ready to present yet, so.
A lot of it's budget-driven, just trying to figure things out.
Yeah, so, and same for us, budget-driven workshops with the financial director and different things, so. So that would be fine then. And is that something we can decide spur of the moment, like at the table? Like, are you available for another hour? Are you available? You know?
I, I think you can.
Okay.
I think to the extent that you know that you're going to do it, you should probably give notice in case there's somebody that does want to come to the meeting.
Okay.
No hard and fast rule around.
Okay.
Should we put, should we put a time limit for an hour or should we say something like that? Is that a big deal?
I don't, well, if you put a time limit on it, are you also setting the minimum that you're going to?
That's true too.
You're not going to come back. You're not ever going to go back into Zoom sessions.
Right. Okay.
It's necessary, you're not, you're not having to close. And you wouldn't be able to take action anymore.
Anything else? You have about five minutes before space.
Mr. Kirk was here last week, we were doing a discussion about the attorney contracts and we have the staff through, technology, and I think we passed them because this week, but they're on the agenda, so maybe we could.
Perfect. Yeah.
Whatever you want to do, I didn't know if they were on or not, or what was going on, so.
Well, my, my way of background, we have contracts with four local attorneys to provide misdemeanor, representation of indigent defendants and, or indigent parties, not all defendants. And misdemeanor cases, in juvenile cases, juvenile offender cases, child care cases, and care and treatment cases. And then occasionally, any other case where a court is required to appoint an attorney, which could be adoption, I mean, could be really any case if someone is cited in contempt of court, for example, they have to have counsel. And so we have four attorneys that, that do that for us. We've had contracts, we do have contracts with them, have for, for many years. And last year, we did not, we, historically, we kind of did nothing and then maybe gave a fifty-dollar a month raise every three years or something like that, which wasn't really keeping up with, with inflation and the costs. And now, many, many counties and cities are having trouble finding attorneys that are willing to, serve on those appointed panels. I know we're even having some trouble in district court where we routinely have, attorneys from Topeka and Leavenworth that are coming up because there just aren't enough attorneys willing to, to do it. This past year, there was no adjustment that was made, mostly, mostly because there wasn't anything, included during the budgeting process. We pay three thousand forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents per month each. John may have some info about, I gathered a little bit of info about some other counties, John may have more.
That's really what I was just here for, some information, wanted some information. Do anything, just provide some information to you all to consider. I found a little bit out, but none, Pat may have some extra. I'd go, go if we want to.
Yeah.
Alright, Pat's correct on what we do. Judge Asher before appointed people on, domestic matters and adoption matters, it's on deck, really hasn't done that, that much, again, since he's been on the bench. But we do misdemeanors, juveniles, and sex and care and treatments and whatever else they want to throw at us. As far as information that I've found, I understand Jefferson County has a contract. Theirs is twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Brown County has a contract that was three thousand, and they are considering going to thirty-five hundred. I talked to Kevin Hill, their county attorney, he believes the thirty-five hundred will clear. I know that Marshall County, I was speaking with Judge Fumler, I believe it was three thousand a month. Brown County, that's it, it looks like it's below the thirty-five. Donovan is hourly, it was eighty dollars an hour. And now they're moving it to a hundred dollars an hour, and I think the purpose of the contract is really to, give the commission a solid figure each month, so you're not busting out a budget or anything like that, in one case, you can do that. I will say, speaking of busting out a budget, we talked about some appeals, the contract covers appeals also. That's usually misdemeanors and juveniles. I just got an appeal for a week-long jury trial, it's about two thousand pages of transcript. And I think the, I think it was seven fifty is what the contract says, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I think that's right, and I think that actually what was in the contract in twenty-twelve.
It is.
When we started, we just never adjusted that.
I just don't think anybody anticipated something of that magnitude. Anyway, Shawnee County, it does just sink and juvenile, and they do a separate one for care and treatment. Their sinking juvenile matter is four thousand a month. The care and treatment is fifteen hundred dollars per month. And, I understand, I'm gonna jump around on you. Brown County, courts typically Tuesdays and some Wednesdays. Jackson, I don't know, I used to go there sometimes and they had theirs once a week. Jackson, I don't know. I used to go there sometimes, and they had theirs once a week. We do typically Monday afternoons at one for the misdemeanor material, and Fridays at nine every week. Thursdays is the juvenile and JV docket, or care, it's the child need to care docket. And that's every week, and it usually starts at 8:30, and lately it's been going. I don't see that changing. At least until noon, if there's a contested case after that, it's either a special sitting or in the afternoon, so sometimes we're there all day. That's really about all I have. If you want some more information, I can try to get some more. I think the request of the attorneys was $3,500, so just throwing it out there. Food for thought.
Thank you very much.
It, it is, it's part of Department 20, County General Department. So currently, it's $146,000 a year for all four. At the current rate, $3,500 would be $168,000.
Joe, what about the appeals? Any feedback on that?
Oh, be honest with you, what we kind of kicked around, not any certain figures, but the juvenile offenders, that knows this, you guys wouldn't, because you don't need to. Is like adults, it's scaled up per level, severity level. The one I had was aggravated indecent injuries, a very high-level felony, seven counts. I think what we had suggested, if it's a higher level appeal, then maybe I'd be a little bit more. If it's a lower level, juvenile matter on appeal or misdemeanor, it's not outlined, probably to stay the same, to be honest with you. Maybe a little more, but not, not crazy. But when you've got a 2,000-page transcript of a jury trial, then you didn't try, that was miserable.
Mr. Zaltner, does that budget include the conflicts attorneys, or is that?
That's just that one.
That's through, is that through district court and their budgeting, so? Because I, I also wondered if we could maybe just put those, kind of lump that in with the with the conflicts and just have the court approve a figure, and that would kind of be per I mean, really specific as to what time it took for that appeal. And if it's lumped in with the others, because I don't think it's going to come up, it's not going to come up every year. At least it hasn't. It's come up, I think, two years out of the last 10, because I think Mr. Campbell had one.
So I think that's probably, yeah, it happens pretty rarely.
And just for my clarification, so I understand you do care and treatments for us too, right?
I represent the state, or the county in care and treatments, yes. The statute requires that the county counselor appear unless the petitioner is represented by other counsel.
Got it. I was just trying to understand, those four separate from what you're doing?
They represent the proposed patients in those same cases, but it's the same case.
And you're representing the state, actually, county to the state?
The county, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, that's not quite accurate. I don't want to make, couldn't get off on the The petitioner in the case is the screener, the person who does the mental health screen. And that's the person that, I appear as county counselor. My statute on to assist the petitioner if they're not represented by counsel. So I'm not really representing the county. My client is not the board of county commissioners. My client is the is the screener. But I'm required, but it's required of the position.
Got it. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, do we have any more questions for Mr. Kirk? Thank you.
Sure, thank you for hearing me.
Sorry for the mix-up last week.
Right. Stacy Wagle, Solid Waste Manager, bid opening approval for Transfer Station and Scale House.
So last week, we opened the bid for Transfer Station, Scale House, and the building addition for recycling. We have three bids, Harner Construction, Lear Construction, and LNL Construction. LNL Construction has since withdrawn their bid, so that leaves them with two. My suggestion would be the low bid from Harner Construction of $792,000.
I have reservations about the Scale House portion of this, and is there any way we could review this further before accepting the bid, or is that something that's set in stone?
Yes, you certainly can. I would have to look to see if, I don't know that I have the RFP. And does, did the RFP say that the bids were open for a specific time, that they had to remain good for a period of time? I don't have a copy of that.
Are we allowed to, when you have a bid process like this, if we want to engage in conversation with the low bidder, to get more clarification or discuss ways, you know, maybe there's things that?
You could certainly discuss different options, change orders and things like that. And clarification of the scope. You're, you're not, we're not to do just a renegotiation of the contract.
May I see that? So, just to let everyone know, we've been through the bid process. We hired Creo Clark and Seifer as architect and engineer to handle this on our behalf. We've identified prior, even to me, for many years, that the Solid Waste Committee as long, as well as our Solid Waste Director have asked for the recycled building and the Scale House improvement project, and we got it approved with budgetary numbers of approximately $450,000? $490,000, I'm sorry. This would be paid for utilizing the countywide sales tax money, which that Fund 897 currently has, as of today, has $1,112,497.48. So there's plenty of cash. I think Eric, as well as my concern was just the way construction is today, which we knew that going in. We knew that costs were more than what our budgetary numbers are of just the transfer building, $375,000, and the Scale House, $417,000. So just for us to have a better handle on what all of the Scale House entails to get us to that number, because initially, it's kind of sticker shock for a 20 by 40 building that's, that's titled a Scale House, right? Because throughout this whole process, we've always said, you know, the basics, and we went and toured Leavenworth, and we've taken pictures, and we know that we need it, and we know that we want to be basic and not extravagant, but also, we're living in a construction market right now that, so just having that time to have a conversation is kind of all we're looking for, to get some, a better handle on it, and that's in conjunction with our financial director. He also concurs of getting, getting some more information.
Yeah, I would, not questioning the need or the, we've had input from Solid Waste Committees and but that is sticker shock. So that's, that's where I'm at.
I would agree. My question is, who's going to contact them? What's that process going to be? There are other questions we want to ask.
Yeah, and we should probably get our heads together and develop that, and maybe we can send them to Mark, if you would be okay with that. Now that we have the numbers, we know the numbers, we know where we're at. And Stacy, I kind of elaborated on that a little bit this morning, as far as the cameras that are going along with it and the wiring, and, you know, there's so many components of what the Scale House is. So just being able for us to have a handle on that, so we can convey the decision and why when we're, when we're asked. Of, of everything it entails, right?
Yeah, um, yeah.
Well, just to make it clear for the public, it's not just a Scale House, it's a house by a scale. It's got a lot of office space, it's got a lot of computer stuff in it, a lot, there's a lot more to it than just like a building, yeah, so.
Yes. And the need being, she's been housed in a FEMA trailer for how many years, and utilized hair dryers to follow the pipes and all the things, like the need is there, we're not questioning that. We just want to have a better handle so that, you know, when we get to the point of we can justify it when questioned, because.
Yeah, absolutely. This is base bid one, base bid two, so could we award just one component, just one bid? I know they bid them because of mobilization, all I get that.
I think he said no, didn't he?
I assume so, but I wouldn't verify that.
I think we asked that question last week, and he said no, but I can find out again.
I don't have a copy of the, the bid specs.
But then, last week, I think we were talking about picking and choosing, like this contractor does this, this contract, but if we utilize the contractor you recommend and only do phase one or one, I don't know, just hearing our options, trying to.
Just a question, yeah.
Yep. So, if you're all right, Pat, to kind of continue looking into those timelines that give us an option, I'll just keep going down the agenda if you're fine, and we'll come back.
Pat, I sent those to you. I did, I just did.
Which was specs. I was going to try to find them.
Okay, so.
Eric, I don't see an attachment. Oh, wait, it's a, it's a link, isn't it?
Yes.
Do we have any more input on that before we come back, or?
So we want to reschedule this for in one week or in two weeks, or what do you?
Well, I think he's looking to see what our timelines.
We're going to revisit this, and yet in this meeting, to make sure that we don't have to make a decision today. Pat will be looking into that.
Let's get him time to research it.
So I have two purchase orders for approval for Senior Village. The first one is for Evergy in the amount of $2,911.21.
What's it for?
Well, it's for her current bill, and it exceeded her spending authority. So again, something to keep in mind when we're doing our procurement policy, that if it's a utility.
This is the utility bill that's going to the other email or something, yeah.
Well, no, not this one. That's what we approved last week, the gas bill that went to another email for several. This is just for one month.
Yeah, typically utilities don't require mission approval, because it's something that we have no change over. We have to pay it, we don't set our rates, we, you know. Typically, that doesn't, and so we've had a conversation with that department head and just educated a little bit on how all that works, so for now, if I'm going forward, you probably will not give that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the, say, the to Evergy.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Okay, and the second purchase order from Senior Village is for RFT, RF Technologies, for an RFT installation project, programming existing components, system upgrade, project management and remote access configuration. The RFT installation project is $320. Programming existing component and system upgrade, $2,133. Project management of $432.24, and remote access configuration of $764.50. In the total of $3,653.74. Do I have a motion?
You saw for the sirens, right?
RF Technologies. I'm sorry.
This is sirens?
No, this is for Senior Village.
This is Senior Village, okay.
The colite system?
Yeah, the walkie. Sorry, I was trying to think of the word, walkie, the walkie system that they're, yep.
I'll move to approve that.
One second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Okay. We're still ahead of schedule, but if you're next on the agenda?
I really don't remember why I am on there. I don't remember putting that on there.
No, I did, because we discussed it at the safety meeting, because we were trying to get more clarification, remember?
Oh. Can you bring it just a little bit more?
So trying to figure out if the safety committee, and Jody, if you're on, maybe you can help clarify a little too, please. At the safety meeting, we were trying to figure out, because it's always fallen on HR's shoulders, basically, to do this, the Columbus Day training for the county, but at the one meeting, I believe that there was some not confusion, but trying to just get some clarification on what that entails and what the training is supposed to be, and if the safety committee is supposed to be assisting with that, and stuff like that. That's what I'm understanding.
Yeah, kind of an understanding and, and approval from the commission.
And if we are going to have that training day, is that training a god?
Yeah, also, yeah, make sure that that's on, so there's not a lot of energy and, and things going towards planning it, and then if it's pulled, because that's something that we need to kind of approve, or at least have the understanding that we are going to participate in the Columbus Day training, at least the same possible format as the last couple of years. Anybody have any thoughts on that? I mean, I, because I think the committee was just want to make sure that, yeah, we need to go ahead with it. The commission's, you know, giving their thumbs up and.
Is it technically countywide training or is it really courthouse? Because it seems like it's different.
It's kind of countywide, I believe. The road and bridge, I mean, Solid Waste comes in.
Some trainings are specific to their branch. Other ones are, it's, because when they have a speaker come in, I think everyone, road and bridge came in, Solid Waste. But then, where, when they broke down at some of the trainings, you know, they, they went, if they needed to have the training for just road and bridge, or they can kind of break it down. It depends on what speakers they get.
So does it really affect EMS, Senior Village, the sheriff's department? Do they participate in any way? I mean, it seems like.
They have, they, they can. It just depends on some, you know, again, staffing and the, the training of the day, whether it pertains to them or not, so. As I remember that a lot of it is like have a speaker and everything, because it's, they're also trying to have a thing of promote county inclusiveness and, and working with the other departments and things like that too. So when you have speakers come in and you're participating as a group, it's kind of also promotes that.
But it's not necessarily Senior Village. I mean, because they've got to work, I mean, they.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, so.
And same probably goes to Eric's point. EMS, you know, if they're, they're busy, they can't come. ITI shows up, though. Mark, do you have anything else?
And some of the trainings are in-house, so we have someone do fire extinguisher training as well, and things like that, that we can do in-house, or CPR training, or things like active shooter training, you know. All these things are, can be interactive with the other departments, because of the nature, it's in-house.
Yeah, I'm in favor of those. It's robust and includes countywide, and and maybe some of those places have some similar training on a different day, and maybe it's easier for, say, Senior Village to plan a different day for training. But I mean, if the banks are closed that day, so a lot of the offices are limited, is what they can do, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Right, and it's because also the courts are closed that day.
The courts close, so.
So it's easy for us to close down to the public and still have just an employee.
Maximize as much as you can.
And the treasures, statewide treasures close that day also, aren't they? I don't think they can be.
I believe so.
I don't think they can be open. So that's kind of the opportunity of doing a lot of these training sessions for countywide. It, it makes the most sense for the most offices. for countywide. It, it makes the most sense for the most offices.
I'm all for training. I think my only suggestion, which I have mentioned a couple of meetings ago is, you know, maybe separating your department heads out into a separate, specific training, you know, been thrown around for different leadership trainings or different, different things of, you know, getting that core group together and developing them at a different level than just everybody. But again, whatever the, the planning group decides, I just think that would be beneficial.
You can bring somebody from Kansas Leadership Center and do a great program for a day. So there's, there's the resources out there.
Yeah, and I have that. I can forward it to the safety committee.
Yeah, and I know Jody has, uh, some speakers that she has looked into or wanting.
And she may have a good one for leadership too, so.
Yeah, she's had one. She's wanted a couple of years now. So Mr. Hayes, was that right, Phil Hayes? I don't remember his name, but either way, she's got all of that information.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda, we're running about 25 minutes.
Phil Hayes from the armed group, sorry.
Okay, I thought it was Phil.
Thanks, Julie.
About 24 minutes ahead of schedule and since the next is a bid opening, I feel like, um.
Oh, I don't have those.
You did skip that. I don't have anything.
Oh, I did, didn't I? Let's back up to Commissioner Thomas. Eric, do you have anything?
No, I had area agency on aging meeting, uh, last Thursday and a lot of struggles there that, as you know, they're trying to build a, a new building. I think they've got granted that
I appreciate it.
Three years ago when we're still in the process of negotiating contracts and everything to get that started. And, uh, but that's gonna be a good addition to the community up there, which filters to all of the partnering counties with them. It'll be a good resource.
Nice.
I don't think I have anything.
I had a Senior Village of IJ report meeting last week and it was great. Lindsay Wood, our new administrator, came and ran the meeting and she does, she's doing a wonderful job. I think she's, she's doing good. Pat attended and gave the board updates on the HARY and different funding mechanisms. So just really good discussion. One of the things David and Lindsay had, um, expressed is, um, when we went through the budget, they had a legal line item in their budget of, of having a contract specifically for Senior Village. Um, and with the history Mr. Henderson brings to the table and that, they would love to retain him on there. So he was gonna work on some things specific to Senior Village to present to the administrator, um, for, for that. So they're kind of working on that. Which I fully support. That's in the best interest of Acheson County for sure. I mean, to, to make sure that he's at the table, especially as we're coming up with a strategic plan and vision for Senior Village to remain, you know, at the table and having that discussion. Trying to think what else was last week. There were so many things last week. Oh, a constituent had brought to me, um, the Leavenworth Times. Um, there was an article in it that had, um, well, actually let me just read the first paragraph because I have the article on my phone. That we made the front page of the Leavenworth County Times that the county considers separating community correction services. So there was an article written by John Richmeyer and the first paragraph was Leavenworth County Commissioners may be moving to separate from Acheson County for community correction services for juveniles. So there was an article that I read about it and I know we had heard, like really next steps in this whole process was our county commissioners getting with the Leavenworth County Commissioners and sitting down and kind of devising, you know, where we stand because it expresses in the article that they're funding, you know, the program for us and, and different pieces. So just to let the public know on that, that we're still working with Leavenworth County. I had a great conversation with their chair, Mrs. Cause yesterday. And she wants, you know, it, it was very uplifting to me when she states, you know, she wants what's best for the kids. And I think from the history and everything that I've been given is what's best for the kids is to keep us together and to figure out a reimbursement mechanism or something to where we can continue to, to work together. So, um, we have, um, reached out to them requesting a meeting for next Wednesday, the 17th. And, um, Commissioner Reavis sits on that board. So he and Eric are able, um, to attend. So we're just waiting on a time back to go and, and let them know that absolutely, whatever the issues are, you know, we're here to, let's iron them out and continue forward. So I don't know if you have anything else. You sit on the board, so I feel weird speaking on behalf of that, but that was something I dealt with last, since our last meeting.
Yeah, and I was dialed in on that as well. And, um, yeah, I think just a matter of meeting with them and going to the next step. So I think we're on the right track to just have our side presented and have that discussion. So this may be a case where maybe one commissioner or something spoke to the press or something. I'm not quite sure how that story got there.
And Mrs. Cause wasn't aware of it either. So I sent that article to her so she could read it as well. So it, it did, it made me feel that she didn't know about it either. So I'm thankful for constituents willing to see Acheson County and bring them to me and ask questions because, um, I'm not, I don't read every newspaper, every agenda item on every other organization. So it's nice. Appreciate that. Other than that, the tire program, oh, that's something positive. Um, I had the banners from the countywide cleanup and took them out to solid waste last Thursday morning. I got there at like eight 20 and there were, I mean, within 15 minutes that I was there talking to Stacy, there were probably 12 plus people that came and unloaded their tires in, in the trailer. So that was exciting. I had a constituent that purchased a trailer directly from ABC Tire Recycling, um, for their needs and they completely cleaned it up, had half a trailer left remaining, so donated it to the county. So, so they now will have two on Thursday, a half a trailer and then an empty trailer. Um, so yeah, that was.
Just for this week?
Yes.
This one time?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but so it's only Thursday, so, but they finished their trailer and they're like, you might as well use it. So I, I was like, that's good. It's reading positivity and I just love seeing that so many people are utilizing it because it's a, it's a resource that was definitely needed and it just.
It'll slow down a little bit now.
Well, I was, you know, wondering about how that was gonna work. If the word got out, then maybe there would have been like a second wave coming. So, I mean, because I know there's thousands of tires out there.
Yeah.
Dr. Lunde, you have, he brought 68.
Speaking of that, so that they put a limit on it and it's 50.
Yeah.
And I wanted to ask you guys about this because, so, yes, and I got a call from, um, so glad you brought that up because I almost forgot that. So neighbors are kind of like working together through this.
Yeah.
And like I have a trailer, you don't, but you have tires. And so anyways, a constituent reached out to me on the 50 minimum. They have asked for help. They've loaded up 50 for their property and then down the road, and I can verify because I know exactly what two properties they're talking about. They loaded up 50. So they currently, right now, have a trailer sitting with 100 tires on it, two people. And they were gonna take them together on Thursday, but they were told the 50 min, 50 maximum. We're fine with accommodating people like that, right? Because not.
I think so.
Okay, I think so too. Absolutely no question in my mind that we should be helping people for this because I, I borrow my, I borrow a trailer from, you know, family because we don't have one and it's, it's, it's a win. I just want to make sure that.
Might would help if they would just have the second party writes on a note and say, you know, 50 of these tires are mine. And, I mean, because that way it is some kind of sort of proof for our people because
Yep.
if, if you say, well, there's 50 tires, but then there's no required proof or, or not even ask about it, then you might as well not even have that 50 sat. So, I mean, I think it would be.
I know the one I talked about, it was more than one person's tires.
Yeah.
But that's the load they took out there.
Yep.
Or if the neighbor could go with them, you know, it's like.
Yep. Well, and that's in my scenario is one of the gentlemen had his knee replaced. So his friends kind of helping him to help, like, it's just, it's everyone help, helping each other. But I just wanted to make sure you guys are good with that because I was gonna get with Stacy on that to make sure that they accept it because she kind of called me in panic, like, what do I do? Do I go unload 50? And then I'm like, no, just, just let me talk to the committee. We're not trying to make this difficult. We're trying to help people, so.
Nobody's brought tractor tires yet or big tires? Okay, we take those.
Well, so that's another thing I wanted to visit with you guys about because right now, currently, we had had that we only take passenger tires, like vehicle tires. Um, but when I was out there on Thursday, I took a photo of this because there were two tires that were brought to the county cleanup that are like the combine tires, like the big ones that take up, you stack two and you took a quarter of your trailer.
They're huge.
And, um, but then there were these tires that were on with passenger tires that are like the front tractor tires that aren't much bigger.
And they look like, or fertilizer sprayer tires.
Well, so I thought so too, but they were turned away. So I just want to make sure with you guys that I, that's why I took a picture to show you because I think
Maybe just have a size. If it was more than three, what would we get, four foot diameter or something like, whatever it is, or figure, radius or whatever you call it. Because you're gonna have, some of those implements do have smaller tires. I mean, I get it.
And then the next guy had one of those in with residential or with.
If we could set like a, if they are implement tires, uh, up to 20 inch rims or something like that and then because the 20 inch rims, they're still probably like that. And that would give some kind of cutoff that's tangible.
Yeah.
I, it'd just be my guess.
Yeah. Well, it's a project to get those big tractor tires or something. Those big ones, that's not a one guy job.
Not at all. But like for this one, I felt bad because it's like the trailer full of, and then just that many that could have been stacked. But again, following the rules. That's why I want to make sure and talk about this with you guys. So the wording being implement tires up to 20 inch rims, is that what you said?
Would that work Stacy's first tire loss size?
Sorry.
I'm on my own conversation.
That's okay. We'll talk about it. I didn't want to put it, we're talking about the tires.
Okay.
Of when the trailer with the, those.
Implement tires.
They were, and we originally said no, but then it's like, Eric had good wording of like implement tires up to 20 inch rims. So you don't do your big combine ones that take up a quarter of a trailer. But like if they want to unload those and stack them, it's not really that big of a deal. Like it's.
Will that work? I mean, is that, is that?
Depends on how fast you want to fill the trailer, but I mean, we're getting more and more every, every Thursday.
That's great.
And lots of calls in between and I just keep telling them, be here at eight.
So it's a fill up on Thursday, then you've sent people away with tires?
Both day, both Thursdays, we've sent them away, yeah. But the first Thursday, I guess we didn't the first Thursday because we only filled a half a trailer the first Thursday. The second Thursday, we started with a half a trailer and there had been more published, you know, people, there was more people that came the second Thursday. So tomorrow, Thursday this week, we're starting with a full empty trailer and a half empty trailer. So but I've already had people ask, how many can I bring at once? 50?
Well, so.
You know, so some, there's somebody out there that's got some big loads.
Well, and that's one of the things I just talked to them about because I had a constituent reach out to me that already has 100 that are loaded up for Thursday, but it's two properties and two people. And so they were freaking out at the. Yes, at the trailer, yeah. And so they were freaking out about the 50 minimum. And so I was just like, no, it should be fine. We're not trying to make it difficult. Like not everyone has a trailer. If you're gonna come together, like, so I do have one that reached out. So I was like, let me talk to the commission. I was like, I don't want you to have to unload what you already loaded. So they'll come out with a trailer with 100, but there'll be two people from two properties. So, and I can give you details because I validate. I, I know exactly who and that it's fine. Like it's, it's validated.
So, yeah, I expect them to be lined out. I mean, as many phone calls as I've got this week already, yesterday and Friday, basically. Yeah, it's getting more and more every week. People are hearing about it and and we've got some that, oh, I've got four. Yeah, come at eight. Come at eight, even if you only have four.
Yeah.
So. I think I only had one application.
Oh, really? I thought she had several.
Not actual county applications. I guess when they hit that, indeed, it shows an interest, but it doesn't put the application to really have to do the next step.
You get all kinds of stuff on there, just screen it all out.
Do you have the bids?
No, Mark's getting them.
Did he know you?
No, I forgot him. I was thinking it's a week clear.
Sorry.
Two minutes ago.
What do you know? And we were just authorized that through the month of May, correct? For the tires?
Yeah, but I think we should revisit that, especially with the needs, I mean, to talk about.
So then two weeks ago and, yeah, I mean, we got time.
Because that's something that's feel good. It's like utilizing the sales tax money to help constituents is a win. Whatever way you look at it, especially when you see, I mean, these are, the ones in my district, I know are huge help from generations and generations of.
Yeah.
Oh, that you just sent to him?
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of it. Really, we're trying to clean things up, so.
Absolutely.
So when you said 50, is that 50 per week? Or 50 per person? I mean, during the program or?
Yes, that's a good point. Is it 50 every week? I guess it is.
I mean, yeah, we're, the way we, I mean, if you're gonna.
Are you tracking individuals, like it's 50 tires for the year or it's 50 tires every time?
I was under the understanding it was per load.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay.
Let's just see how it goes for a while. It might, it might slow down. There's not an infinite number of tires out there. I mean, there is a finite number of tires.
I mean, just my thoughts on it.
They're not reproducing. I'm saying, okay.
Maybe do it once like May and then maybe once like October, November, you know, and, and like split the timing up. So, I mean, that's just a thought. I don't know if that's smart or not. If, if we choose to expand it.
Sorry, I missed what you said because I was reading our.
You know, if we choose to expand it or go longer, do we go another four weeks continuous or do we split it up and maybe go into the fall if we do it, do it again?
Yeah, we'll have to discuss that.
I guess if you get people coming.
In motion is probably continuous would be my vote, just to keep it going.
Thing's gonna be is once we get them used to Thursday, how do you stop that?
Yeah.
And if they got them loaded on a trailer and they pull up there and I turn them away, it's going somewhere. It's not going back home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, they got them on there, they're not.
Yep. Just to recap really quick, so you don't have to sit around for us, um, we can, there shouldn't be any issue according to county counselor of discussing this next week or the week after, which will make it a priority to kind of get our ducks in a row of what information we wanted to dig into and, and get that.
And I told the architect and he said that, yes, all that happens all the time.
Yeah.
So that is something that we can do.
That we're asking for. Yeah, it should happen. I mean, we can't just, woo, sounds good, like authorize something that we don't have a handle on.
He wanted to know if you all wanted him to set it up. Or.
That'd be great.
Or what?
I think stay on course with how we've been doing it and then.
That's fine with me.
Yep, let's just do that.
And like what timeframe?
Well, do we want him just to, they could come next week at like sometime in our open meeting? We can ask the questions, we can dig in and then we can make a decision?
Yeah, with the executive session issue, it's kind of a contract.
Probably not. We could have a discussion today, an executive session, um, for me to give me some guidance on talking to the partners about.
Okay.
You could do that. There isn't an exception to allow you to have just negotiations or something like that.
I just was asking.
Yeah, I think.
That sounds fine.
Just having a little more detail on what exactly that scale has entailed will be. Be helpful. Yeah, I think, I mean, if the commission's fine, just letting Stacy get with Joe to come next week and answer our questions. Yeah. Thank you.
And it's Monday, right?
Oh, yeah, good call. We are meeting, it's Monday because we're in a budget workshop on Tuesday. So, Monday the fifteenth. What?
I gotta call somebody to work for me on Monday, but I can. I mean, it is what it is.
Well, the next option would be Tuesday at twenty thirty. Okay.
And we are not doing an executive session today. Doesn't include me or does?
Well, that's up to the commission.
I think that's a good idea. Discuss what he's talking to them about.
And why do we need that next executive session?
Executive session, what time would that, would we have to just let you know then when that's gonna come up?
I don't know. Or does it include me or does it?
To discuss those points we need to talk about on this. I mean, what do you think? Use the decent direction.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Right, I, I think that would it have to be in, in an executive session? I guess it wouldn't have to be, but it would be my recommendation would be.
What do you think, twenty minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, we have three executive sessions so far, so twenty minutes, you said, attorney-client? And as attorney-client, are we allowed to have departmented with us as well?
If they're involved with the issue, sure. If any person that would be driven into the discussion, if you want to have.
I don't have the time. We are, we're going to at least one, probably past that, and then we have three executive sessions.
So if I came back at one fifteen or twenty or thirty, ten thirty?
Or we could text or call you.
Yeah, it might be better to text you after the first executive session and then that it'll give you time.
Yeah, we'll be out there, so, but it'll be after one.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, two minutes and then we will do Roden Bridge Kenworth lease purchase bid opening.
So are you ready for the bid opening?
Yeah, I was trying to stay one more minute and then we'll, yep.
Sharpen your letter opener, get ready.
There you go.
Okay. All right, so Kaylee will be opening Kenworth lease purchase bid openings on behalf of Joe Snyder, Roden Bridge Superintendent.
There was three bids received.
And this is for?
A Kenworth. It was a used Kenworth.
Twenty eighteen.
So yeah, for the twenty eighteen Kenworth T eight eighty duck truck from GN Bank. It looks like an interest rate of four point two zero percent with a semi-annual payment of twenty four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars estimated. Does anyone need that information again?
Read it one more time.
Interest rate of four point two zero percent with a semi-annual payment of twenty four thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. So two four six six zero, no change.
And that was from?
GN Bank.
GN, I was gonna GM at first.
Girard National Bank.
I'll say it. GN Bank at Fortin. Second one is from Exchange Bank with an interest rate of five point zero nine percent with a semi-annual payment of twenty five thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. So five point zero nine percent, twenty five thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. So two five, two four three, two nine. The third bid is from First Option Bank out of Troy at an interest rate of four point one four percent with a semi-annual payment of twenty four thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and three cents. So four point one four percent, twenty four thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and three cents. Two four, three three, zero, zero, three. And that's all the bids received.
Okay, so we'll let Joe review those when he gets back and give a recommendation.
I don't know if there's really a need to. In the past several that we've had, we've just approved. The commission has just approved the, approved one and started the process, but
it's just the financials. It's not a spec kind of thing.
I just didn't want to overstep a department head if he wanted to, since he was absent, but if he's fine with us.
Well, I can sure talk to him. If he wanted to discuss it further, we could do that. Otherwise, we could just get started with
Okay.
Getting the lease purchase documents done because that takes a little time.
So your recommendation would be first option in Troy with a four point one four percent semi-annual twenty four thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and three cents?
I'll make a motion to accept that option, first option.
Okay.
So.
Then move to second and all those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Hey Roger, we're ahead of schedule, but I think we're good. You can go ahead with you.
It's not a problem. As a matter of fact, I know I sent you some information, but if you want to
Thank you.
Have a copy of it off, talk about this very briefly. I will, I, I know I sent it to Pat, I'm gonna use one to talk from for a moment. As you should be aware, our department deals with a lot of other departments. We help the clerks through issues with taxation and voter registration, voter creasins and mapping that we do with those things and the database associated with them. We help out with the register of deeds, transfer questions and legal descriptions and the value of very different kinds of affidavits and, and deeds and things that are going on. We work with the sanitation people through any KES. We work with the treasurer on tax sales and a number of other issues. Roden Bridge, we're always doing something with them in terms of, you know, you hear all those various different things that we do. We work with addresses and nine-one-one and occasionally the sheriff has special tasks that we do. In the process of doing all of these things, oh, and we also work for the appraisers, by the way. And, and one of the things is, and this was brought up at another time, in a lot of counties, the GIS department may be under the appraiser. Our GIS department does a lot of work for many, many other agencies and that's why we kind of serve overall in terms of what we end up doing. As a matter of fact, we're spending a great deal of time with Brian producing plans for the trader's office. And we're working out electrical schematic diagrams for the courthouse right now because there is nothing on that. In the process of doing all of these things, there are a lot of properties that come in front of us that have issues. And the issues that come in front of us are sometimes things that are not real easy to find. And people come talk to us about issues that involve not just the county, but the city, and then we end up directing them to the right places. Oftentimes, these things that come before us are issues that don't show up in the records anywhere, but they show up through our investigation. And they're things that should be fixed. Now, we tell the people that they should be fixed, but oftentimes they get finished up and they're not fixed. And then the next person comes back and talks to us about the same kind of an issue. And when they find out that we know about it and they didn't do anything about it, then they're upset with us. And so my, my statement to you is this, we can continue to do everything just like we are right now. Or we could start a process by which we encourage the reparation of those items that we find. And I've got a couple of items in here just to give you an idea of what they might be. And I can tell you on our plate right now, we probably have eight or ten of these kinds of issues. Case number one that I tell you about, and I'm trying not to get personally involved with the people on it, but it's a situation where you can see where the house is, you can see where the property lines are, and you can see where their lagoon is. And their lagoon actually exists on another parcel of property. This case came to us because they're getting ready to build another garage and they want water and wastewater facilities in that garage and they want to use that lagoon. The problem is, the lagoon is not on their property, it's on the neighbor's property. Now, in this case, as with many cases, the neighbor is a relative of theirs and they say, hey, this is all right, they don't mind, this is just fine. The problem that we have is that at one point in the game, somewhere down the road, one of them sells their property. And when they do, it's not relatives anymore. And then it's much more difficult to repair. So as you can see in this case, you can see where the house is, where the lagoon is, and how it's on a separate piece of property. What we would normally do in these cases is we would tell them that we need it fixed. But if it doesn't get fixed, we have nothing that we end up doing. And so when someone else buys the property, which of course, everyone says we're never gonna sell this, but when they do, then that new buyer comes to us and says, well, what do we do? I mean-
Or what are you going to do?
Or what are you going to do? That's exactly what. The second case I'm gonna tell you about, and this one, I will mention one of the parties involved is the city of Muskoda. They got ahold of us and they said, well, we have a pump house down on the south end of this property. And they wanted that blocked out as their ownership. And we said, well, that'd be good, but there's nothing with the register of deeds on this. And so we asked them to find something. Now, they have looked and said, well, they just can't find anything. It is one of those situations though where they need to find a deed, they need to get, because municipalities are as bad as anyone at not finishing the paperwork and making sure that everything is taken care of. So here's two cases that I can tell you that will come back to haunt somebody because if someone else ended up buying this property, it could be a little issue. And then there's also the possibility that the owners tend to think that gee, that property should be exempt because it's not really even there. They've sold it. And so these things always continue to come back and work at us. So what I'm saying to you is, these issues, they could involve access problems. We get a lot of cases where someone sells a child or a member of their family two acres out in the middle of a field. And it's got no road to it, it's got no utility easements to it. Those are future problems. And we just recently had one where husband and wife broke off two acres out in the middle of a field. They took a loan, the mortgage separated that two acres from the rest. Neither the septic tank nor any access to that two acres was recorded in any way, nor were there any documents for it. And then the husband and wife got divorced, she got the house in the settlement, she quit paying on the house, the mortgage takes it back. And yeah, Eric's left because he knows who this is. But it, those are real problems. And then the bank sells it on the courthouse steps and it sells to somebody else who's coming in and they're being prohibited from getting to their house.
He's a helicopter.
There you go. My problem is that when we're involved in these and we do nothing, then they just go pass on to the next people. And so my situation to say to you is that if you would like us to do something, here's the, the process by which I think that we could go about it. We have the discovery, which we find something. We notify the principal party to allow them time for an appropriate response. In the case of the lagoon situation, we tell the person who's using the lagoon, you need to go get either an easement or ownership, whatever is gonna satisfy, because there is actually a KDHE rule. Lagoons are called, lagoons and septic systems are called onsite treatment systems. They're called onsite for a reason. It's supposed to be on the same site. And you would think, oh, this is a rare case. I bet we run into six to eight of these a year. And have for every year that I've been in because the neighbor says, hey, go ahead, put your septic system over here. And then you get ready to sell your property and, and the bank is needing to know that it's on the property and it is. And those create some real problems. So we have the discovery, we notify the principal party and allow them time for appropriate action. If a written course of action is agreed upon, allow the responsible party to resolve it. We don't need to notify in the beginning the person who owns the property. If we notify the person who's using the lagoon, they ought to go take care of it. If there's no response or an unacceptable, or an unacceptable response, we should send a letter to all the involved parties. Which includes, if there's a bank and a mortgage, we should probably also send them a letter and say, hey, you got a problem going on here. You may want to take care of it while the parties are all still present. If it doesn't get resolved in a reasonable period of time, and, and by reasonable period of time, I'm thinking months, not ten days, then we would bring a resolution to the commission. Maybe once or twice a year. I'm, I'm not wanting, it's extra work for us. If you say, let's find the way it is, I'm good, I'm gonna go away. I'm not gonna ask you about this again. And when somebody comes in next time, I'm gonna say, it's the direction the commission has chosen. But otherwise, what we would do is we would bring you a resolution. The resolution might contain a number of these on it and descriptions of what the situation is. And then if you pass that resolution, you could scratch or do whatever you want with these, but if you pass that resolution, then we would register that with the register of deeds. Shelley has told me resolutions do not have a fee associated with getting them in the system. And then that would become a cloud on the title. Or a, an accouvrance that anyone who does a title search would know, oh, we need to make sure that this is repaired. The reason I'm saying that, and again, that occurs if, if you have ever dealt with the city in terms of their nuisance abatement. They pass a resolution on all of the parcels that they're going to fix. And then that resolution goes against all- And then that resolution goes against all of those properties with the register of deeds to say they owe the city this much money for repairing their nuisance. Uh, this is not a difficult thing. I don't know that we need anything that says that this is the process. But if you tell me you're interested in moving forward with this, uh, we could just let those people know that the commission has informed me that they would like to get these things fixed. And if not, that they will pass a resolution encompassing the property. Now, having said all of that, can I answer any questions for, and, and you all know these things are out there, you've seen them. It seems that, uh, through GIS, we deal with a lot of these things because anytime there's a problem in one of the other departments with things that they can shift our direction, they do. And, and I can't blame them because we deal with more pieces of the puzzle. But, uh, we really want to help people out and I just, I feel guilty when we're not doing so.
When it comes to the wastewater systems, does any KES have any jurisdiction or, or push to get these type of things resolved when it's off-site? Now, I mean, do they, could, could they help this process any? Because they, they deal with wastewater situations.
They do. They can and they do.
And they're also, it would work hand-in-hand with KDHE.
Right. But the question comes down to what is the penalty? What is the absolute, what are they going to do? Um, we just had another one and I'm, and I mentioned this because we had another one just recently where the person bought two acres from another individual relatively close to the industrial park. Uh, when they did that, uh, they got a permit from any KES to build a lagoon on their property. And when the contractor came out to install it, uh, the owner said, I want it right down there. And the contractor said, well, that's off your site. And he said, go ahead and let's put it there anyway, or that's so the story I've been told. Martha's got ahold of me and said, and in fact, you all got an email while I'm next, didn't you? And it said, hey, what do you want me to do? Now, my response to her is enforce it. But what is the enforcement? Nothing really happens. And this is our way of saying, okay, so if they're out of compliance, there should be something that tells the next person who's going to buy the property that it's out of compliance. I, it's just my thoughts.
So my, my initial thoughts are, I appreciate this information. So thank you for going in and giving, giving us this. And when you say, I'm here to help people, like that's my number one thing as a commissioner. So every situation's different. Um, and it's hard to put a hard past on all of them because like for your example of case one, like I look at it and I'm like, oh, I can go, like go explain this to my constituent and we'll get it resolved and they'll understand, right? But not everyone understands. So, I think that my only concerns would just be understanding what this process, and we can discuss it more, but what the process looks like as far as who's notifying the party, if it's a letter, are we being named? Because sometimes I get those phone calls of like, hey, I got this and it says the county commission. And we have no idea what's been sent out on our behalf. So just making sure that the process, we're informed. Um, and if it's something like case one where you and I can make a phone call and get it resolved versus sending a letter and going through the process, like, I don't know, I just have some questions to make sure that we're received well on the other end.
And, and as much as possible, I want that to occur. But understand anytime you enforce, there is a tendency to say, uh, that's, that just isn't real fun. Uh, in the case of number one that you see there, uh, the individual applied for a development permit, it's how we found this discrepancy. Uh, he has been verbally informed that he's been taken care of and has told us that he will get that done. And if he gets that done, then that's great and we can move on. If it isn't taken care of and it's been two or three months now, if it isn't taken care of in another couple of months, then at some point, we're going to write a letter and, and the letter could be as simple as saying, hey, you know, we informed you about this four or five months ago, um, you haven't done anything about it yet. Please let us know where you're headed with this. And if you say it's going to take me four more months to do it, then, then we'll say, okay, and we'll put it on the calendar and, and check it in four months. Because sometimes, just like this, uh, you get ready to do this, you've got to get a surveyor in to create the description for the, uh, transfer, sale, or easement that's going to occur.
Right.
And, and again, I would have to deal through Martha to find out what is considered acceptable to satisfy KDHE. And there are a lot of, I gave you this and I gave you this nameless because there are a lot of those out there. A tremendous number of those out there. And all I've done is, this is not all the cases we have right now. This is two cases that give you a blatant example of what it is we're talking about.
So how far back would you go on the ones you've been dealing with over the last several years?
You know what? If they're on my table right now, I'm going to work it. If they're not on my table right now, I'm not trying to go back and stir up more crap.
Sure.
Do understand that, uh, the stuff that's gone by has gone by. I, I just would like to say, hey, we're no longer ignoring these things. That, that's my impression. If you want me to go back and pick up for two years or three years, uh, we'd be happy to do that. But traditionally, when these things come to the surface, they just don't handle themselves very well.
I like it.
Now, I am going to tell you, it's not going to be well received by everyone. Enforcement is not. It's just like you have with nuisances where you've said, hey, we're going to notify these people. Well, what do we do? If you don't ever do anything, it never gets resolved. So, and again, knowing that the threat is out there is a good deterrent to ignoring the problems.
Thank you for the information.
Yeah, I think it's a good plan.
Would you all, am I hearing from you all that you would like me to move forward with this? Because I don't know that we need a separate proposal that says this is exactly how we're going to do it. It's just a matter that I'm going to go ahead and start working these. And when we get to a point, we would just bring a resolution to you. And you can look at them and say, hey, I don't want this one on there, or I do want that one on there, or, I mean, you can work them any way you want. But we're going to try and work through resolving them. And if not, we would just look at preparing a resolution, bringing it to you, and the final decision on whether or not it goes on that resolution would be in the county commission's hands.
So I would like to have further discussion with you and see the list of those people because just, I mean, Atchison County is not that big to look at an aerial and know whose property this is, like without a name. I'm like, oh, really? Yes.
Why, how would that change anything? If you're, if it's wrong, it's wrong. I mean, it's okay to know who it is, but...
But it's okay before approving something to understand the process.
The process is great. I like the process. I know with the city, we had a problem years ago with nuisances before I was on the commission where commissioners would go in and say, no, don't send them a notice. No, don't send them a notice. Well, that's my cousin. You know, and that doesn't work. You know, so if the idea is just to be aware, it's okay. But if the idea is to derail it so someone gets elected enforcement, I don't support that. So...
So I'm not derailing anything. I just know historically, we don't take correct steps to get good communication with our constituents. We feel like firing letters with threats of misdemeanors and fines is the way to get people to cooperate. And I wholeheartedly disagree with that. So I just would, I support a process. I support if we get to the point of needing to do something, but I also want to understand who's responsible, what that process is, who's sending the letter. Like we, I don't even know outside of this person in my district, who else is on there that I could help you remedy the situation. So just having a little bit more information as far as my district goes would be helpful.
Okay.
But I'm not derailing or anything or questioning. I just have a...
No, no, and I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how to do...
Yeah, all of it.
All of this and, and because my thought was, it all comes to you for passage and you can up or down on any one of them you wanted and scratching from that resolution. Or we could bring a list to you. What we could do is we could just say, hey, I bring the list to you guys. You look at them and if you say, uh, I want these on the resolution, then we prepare the resolution and put them on there.
Yeah. So that's the part I just, as long as we're part of the discussion to know what's being, like the steps taken. And you had used the city as an example. So when I watch a city meeting, it's easy to know what steps are taken because they're explaining them. Like, hey, I notified this person, I gave them this many days, this is the timeline. Like sometimes for us, we don't know any of that. We just know that our name's tied to a letter being sent to people and it's just, in order to be part of the solution, we need to be part of the process. It's just what I'm trying to...
So what I'm doing here is I'm saying between four and five, I'm putting in a four and a half right now, that says if the issue is not resolved, bring a list of, uh, those properties to the commission for their discussion of using in that resolution.
I, I mean, I think that...
Will that do what you want?
Yeah, it creates the conversation to where we can, you want to help people, we want to help you. And if I know case number one, after the meeting, can call and say, hey, did you talk to Roger? We got to get this remedied. Like just giving people an opportunity to...
Right.
Before I send him a letter that, hey, this is what's happening to, we're clouding you.
However, I want you to understand.
I do.
Number one, uh, on step number two, we're already talking to the people and saying, hey, this needs to be fixed.
Yep.
And then on step number four, we're saying, hey, you haven't done anything with it for a long period of time. And so it still needs to be fixed. And then on step number four and, four and a half, we're now saying, okay, we've given you step one, or we've given you a step two and step four notifications. And now we're going to send it to the commission for them to tell me, uh, we're through dealing with you and it's going to go ahead and go on a resolution.
In between step four and five, then you'll be able to give us that update of what's been done and, and the correspondence.
Right.
Okay.
I, I think we can do that. What I'm trying to do is, uh, and again, at the same time, I'm trying not to turn us into the bad guys. I've always been quick to say, I'm not an enforcer. And, and I don't want to be an enforcer. And I, what I don't want to do, and I will tell you, if the first time we do this, we turn into the enforcer and the commission says, oh, no, 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 we're not going to do any of this, then we're through.
Yep.
I'm through with it at that point.
But I think that's...
It won't ever be back again.
There's no virgins on the list. I mean, everybody's guilty already. They, they know it for months or if not years, right? So it's not going to be like, oh my gosh, I've been ambushed.
Right.
So my thing though, to your point, is you're telling people you're not the enforcer. Us three are the enforcers. So if I'm enforcing something, I want to be part of the process so I know I can back up what is going out to, to tell people why. Because at the end of the day, we're a team. And if you have initiatives that we aren't backing up, that doesn't work. But if we have initiatives that we're not passing on to you, like we have to all be part of the process so that when someone comes, because that's the first call they make is, hey, Alan, I got your letter today, you know, and then you need to know what they're talking about. So you can defend the process.
When you get a call and it's like, oh, I didn't know that went out.
Yes. And it's like, send it over.
Well, now, the other thing that we can do is instead of doing it four and a half on number four, if we just send you, and we do this, can we send them a copy of the letter when we send it to the, to the parties?
Yep. And then we're in four.
And then you will already know about it. And if you say, oh, no, no, this isn't right, you shouldn't do this. Just contact me and, and let me know how we need to back off or change something. Some of these issues that we bring up may actually be beyond the people's control to take care of. But they still need to be logged against the property.
Yep.
Uh, they still need to be logged as an issue that potential people should be aware of. Every once in a while, you have something, for instance, there's a road across a piece of property. I can tell you this was within the last two weeks. There's a road across a piece of property. The people want to know how the road got there. I can't answer the question. I'm talking to an engineer saying, I know what I know, I don't know what I don't know. And the problem is, we know, we know what there is on good records for roads. We don't know what we can't see. And I can tell you, there are records that just aren't very good. And we've seen this before. Uh, we kind of saw this, this sort of thing happening with, uh, if you remember the Purdue-Bullem property down south. And that's one of those cases where had we not, uh, resolved it and said, hey, this is now going on as a road, it's probably something we should have put in a note somewhere that said, there's a drive, private drive across this property that's been used for years and, and probably ought to be considered part of the record. Okay.
That's good.
Great. Thank you.
We good? Thank you.
Look at us, we're right on time now too. All right. I have a purchase order for approval, um, from the treasurer's office to Navrat's for office furniture that includes delivery and installation. It includes storage if the office is not ready, um, for the time of delivery as well. And that was for, I believe, seven, seven desks and cubicles. The purchase order is an amount of $29,250. Do I have a motion to approve?
So...
Okay. It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Okay. All right. I have the updated draft for, um, the resolution establishing guidelines and procedures for opening invocation before regular meetings of the Board of County Commissioners of Atchison County. Do I have a motion to approve?
So...
Okay. It's been moved. Do I have a second? All second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
We have some discussion.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
So what's your plan to implement this?
Um, well, if it passes, then the plan is to get with the clerk's office and figure out how to do it.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Like who, how, make it easy. Yeah, it's super easy. I, I presented last week. I have the list of everyone countywide and, um, put it out there. And there's no reason we couldn't get this calendar done for the rest of the year. And, I mean, make it easy. So people know what to expect. It's on their calendar. They show up. If they don't show up, we can fill in. Yep. So, all right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes two to the one.
Okay.
All right. This was...
Did you assign it? Eat number?
Oh, no. Twenty twenty-three fifteen.
I'm thinking twenty-two, Patrick.
You can put it on there. Here we go, the official...
Fifteen twenty-two?
I'm waiting on Patrick. That's what I'm showing.
Twenty-two.
Okay. Okay. I have a purchase order, uh, from emergency management to be paid out of ARPA funds for rescue truck, um, camper shell. It's for, uh, glass window, door side, driver's side tool box with shelf, dome light with switch, and then freight and installation. As where, as well as a cargo glide fifteen hundred and labor and installation in the amount of $5,677. Do I have a motion to approve?
So... Sorry?
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. There you go.
You respond with the line, I guess it's not on here, about running boards.
That's a separate, do I think?
Okay. I just want to make sure that this was intended to be today. I know I just read the email. That was a separate.
Is that for today?
Well, I, there's no P O, so you'll...
It's not.
Well, he hasn't got that, so...
The running boards is from fifteen here.
Yeah, it's on fifteen.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make it clarify that it wasn't supposed to be...
Same thing, yeah.
So if you guys are okay, we're still twenty minutes ahead before Brian will be here with an update. So I can just keep going if you guys are, we'll just come back to him. All right. So, um, I have a journal entry, um, from our finance director for TS Conrad invoices to be expensed out of joint communication budget in the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and forty-eight cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, discussion. Okay, what, what is this going forward, I mean?
So, there were TS Conrad invoices that was expensed out of the sheriff's budget initially.
Okay.
There was no budget for this one item. So, it was brought to my attention to make a journal entry to put it into the joint communications so that the solid waste, or not the solid waste, but the sales tax would cover those IT expenses. And so it was, we looked into it and I added up all the different invoices, got the documentation together, and then made a journal entry to do it. Then it was, I was asked why I did the journal entry, so I was just coming before the commission to get approved to do it.
Okay, so this is transferring basically from his budget to the sales tax?
Yeah, like communications, the IT services, so that the sales tax can cover those expenses.
Okay.
This stems from the conversation we had last week of where the commission gave guidance based on department head recommendation. And then, after looking at it with the financial director, we realized that guidance is not okay. Sales tax money should not be taken out and put in anywhere, other than joint communications and solid waste. So Mark was making that trans, journal entry, and then the, the department head, 'cause you put Kim and then the sheriff and I on that email.
I did.
And so then Kim, Kim's on, if she questioned why. Kim, did you have any questions for the commission on why we made that decision? Gotcha. Well, if she has any questions, she can ask us, but we gave you direction to do it. So you just want approval to, to take this out of the sales tax?
Correct.
To joint communications, sorry, expensive to joint communications budget.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. We will all just sign this for record.
We kinda had a, a side conversation about going forward, how do we-
I would just sign like under my name, so we're all on there.
How are we going to split between, so we, we, eight ninety-seven fund is the, is the old fund, nine ninety-seven is the new fund.
Okay.
So going forward, once there are some collections from April and going forward, then we will start putting that into nine ninety-seven. The sales tax money that we've received so far has not been collected in April, so it's still all going into eight ninety-seven. I'll run the report when we get May's distribution report and see when that money was actually collected. And I may, Mark and I were kinda talking about this, I may have, there, there will be a period of time, and it may be for quite a while, where that money goes into both buckets.
Will that be laid out, you don't know how the reports will really come from them, whether that will-
So, there is a report that says Walmart collected in February, and this is the amount. RNS collected in January, and this is the amount. Some people pay quarterly, some people pay monthly, some businesses pay monthly, some pay quarterly. So I can sort that report in a way that'll sort it by date, and then just, you know, do a sub total of this date and this date. April first going forward will go into nine ninety-seven, and March thirty, going back will, will go March thirty-first, whatever March ends with. Then it'll go into the eight ninety-seven. So it, but there still will be money going into eight ninety-seven for some time.
So what I was trying to get at is how do we, you know, we have that transfer, that, that percentage split that goes into solid waste and joint communications from eight ninety-seven. Are we just supposed to deplete eight ninety-seven completely before transferring from nine ninety-seven into those two funds? You know, you have two buckets here now.
So which bucket do you want us to draw from?
Brian.
Did you ask the auditors?
No, because it's not an audit.
I mean, it will be next year.
Yeah, but-
I'm gonna say I wouldn't be.
This is, I don't, yeah, I don't know that the audit, auditors are gonna have a whole lot to say about that, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Because they're looking more for incongruencies and, and things like that. This is not an incongruency, it's just where are we, where are we drawing from?
I would draw, as soon as there's enough available cash, I would draw off the neighborhood. All the nine ninety-seven.
What if there isn't enough in there?
Well, I mean, I, I would, I, I don't have any problem drawing some out of the-
And then what are we gonna do with eight ninety-seven? And then the second question is, then what are we gonna do with eight ninety-seven?
At some point, they could be merged together, I mean, at some point to save money, I mean, why couldn't you do that?
Well, because there's, there's different, each tranche has, one is dedicated. We can't do anything, we don't have any discretion over the nine ninety-seven. It will be solid waste and joint communications. The eight ninety-seven, we can, there is some discrepancy on that. And so if we have a project that might be, you know, something that is close to, but maybe not qualify as directly joint communications or solid waste, we could use that, 'cause we have the discretion on the eight ninety-seven, so it'd be kind of a savings account, more, not, not a savings account, but something that we could more easily-
Reserve.
Yeah, it's a reserve that we could more easily use for related, yeah.
Capital out of items that are kind of related to solid waste and joint communications.
Yeah. Give us some discrepancy on that, so that's my idea.
Try and make it in both funds.
Well, we'll have to for a while, because, yeah.
Yeah, so my thoughts are, so the budget we know is on an annual basis, not on a monthly basis. So I don't know what our expenses are for, say, solid waste and joint communications, say, in April. But with that being said, I agree with Eric that the nine ninety-seven, when that new sales tax is implemented in like, at that date of April, I feel like everything should come out of that. And then if there's a shortage, then we discuss, because in the past, it was always talked about supplementing it with the eight ninety-seven that we had. But just making sure that we communicate that, so we know what's going on, but not ever to mix the eight ninety-seven with the nine ninety-seven.
And I do agree with that, right, so we have to dedicate things.
So that, no, please, just-
But how long is it gonna take to build?
It might be, yeah, it might be a challenge for a while.
It's gonna build, maybe September, October before you can draw.
Right, right. Because, you know, yeah, we are receiving, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a month, but when was that collected? So next month, we will probably still have mostly March. So we would start seeing April money in June, June and July. But we're probably not gonna see a ton, based on kind of how I've looked at that report historically.
So you'll have a couple months of expenses with no revenue to pay?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause you won't see the April until June or July, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
Okay, so that lapse of time.
Yeah, you won't be big, get on a pattern probably till the fall at least, I'm sure, or it's somewhat predictable.
Yeah, 'cause, I mean, I think your regular businesses, your larger, you know, our larger ones, my office is one of the larger ones, there's several others, you know, that it's pretty regular, but then you've got your quarterlies that are gonna come into play, and maybe somebody, I mean, there were a couple on that report from several years ago that are paying, you know, so.
Well, they get, they didn't pay their taxes and then they had to get trouble. So you're gonna have some of those.
So we will have some stragglers, so in theory, those should still continue to go into eight ninety-seven, even if it's two years from now.
Yeah, I figured that it was gonna take quite a long time to get those.
I'm not sure we'll ever be able to close it.
I don't think so.
Maybe in ten years or something.
Then we may get the audit involved then, to anything, we're just gonna shut it down and-
It'll all go in, yeah. And then you guys may have to do a resolution or something at that point, I don't know.
I bet we're not doing it.
Ten years from now?
Maybe, Casey. In ten years, you're gonna be kinda commission-
Oh.
She may be.
Yeah.
I, so I guess the guidance I would give you guys is just making sure the nine ninety-seven, eight ninety-seven are separate. And then if you have a need to pay bills and don't have the money collected yet, you're gonna have to use the eight ninety-seven.
I mean, we're gonna have to do a transfer at some point very soon into two oh two and two oh five.
And I know historically, any questions that we've ever asked, you have it documented exactly what went where. So if we have any questions or get questioned, like, you'll have all of that for us, so.
And that's why everything does go into those two funds first, before it's dispersed out, because it-
It's cleaner.
Yep.
Did we review the percentages going into those two accounts from the, at the organizational meeting?
Yeah, we adjusted it.
Did we?
I knew me and you talked about it, but I wasn't here for it.
That was, 'cause I think we talked about it right from Mark left, so, yeah.
And then I thought you came with us, 'cause we adjusted it. Was it, wasn't it seventy-five, twenty-five, and we went to sixty, forty, or vice versa?
It was seven, yeah, it was an oddball, seventy-seven, twenty-three. And then we went to sixty, forty, because Mark and I looked at the budgets and said, okay, the forty, the total, the total budget.
Yep.
Stacy's budget was forty percent of, of the one hundred percent, and Kim's was sixty. So we kind of pulled it back. And I know Stacy's got some large, some large things happening this year, too, which we also talked about may need to, to be a budget amendment. I don't know if you shared that with them yet, but.
Figured we'd cross that when we got to.
Yeah, I know it's, we always wanted to review that yearly at least as a commission, 'cause I know in the past, when I first got on, sometimes mid-year, they realized, oh, the one's out of money, and it's like, oh, they did a mad scramble, and then have to overcompensate to get that back, those reserves up in the vacuum.
And that's why Mark and I took a look at the budgets, 'cause that's where we're starting from. So we looked at the budgets, we said, well, this just makes sense to do it this way, so.
Okay.
That was how we came to sixty, forty. So we'll see.
I think it'll be a better, better now.
All right. Next is the treasurer's salary correction per the commission error. I have a new employee payroll status form. We, I don't have the date in front of me, but February, December, sorry. We made a mistake when we had adjusted the treasurer, the clerk, and the register of deeds. They were all in an open meeting, adjusted to sixty thousand, and we signed a employee status form to include the motor vehicle as part of that, which by statute, we cannot do that. So this is just to change the pay rate from the forty-nine, eight oh eight to the sixty thousand effective May twenty-first of twenty twenty-three for the treasurer. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll so move. Say.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero, and if all three of you would sign this along with me, that would be helpful.
Just down there.
And again, that's confusing, 'cause I know I had signed that as the chairman then, but again, how is that manifested when I'm reading that? Whether it should be, you know, I, I signed what I thought it was supposed to, you know, what it's supposed to look like, but-
Is that gonna be retro, or just starting from?
I thought it was gonna be retro.
I thought it was gonna be retro, too. I just don't know the, I don't know the behind the scenes, so it's easy for us to say that, but then it's like-
You just said dated May first, that was why I was just-
So that would be effective- So let me look at the date.
Effective January first, if you're doing retro.
Yeah, effective January one.
So let's just put that here and then we'll initial it. You guys good with that?
I'm good with that.
Like the amended?
Yeah, I think, are you wanting the date of when you guys did that?
I think we need to actually vote on that. I mean, so, I'll make a motion to make it retro.
Okay.
It's January one.
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero, and I just wrote one-one-twenty-three and then initialed it.
Thank you for that clarification, and thank you.
Yep.
Sorry about that. I mean, that was not-
Oh, I know, I wasn't ready to.
Thank you. All right, so we have five minutes before Brian.
Restaurant break.
Yeah, good call, I was gonna put the restroom.
Oh, there's two restrooms, and they both left, so I guess I'll wait.
I know.
It's kinda like at the courthouse, when, when we weren't in the basement, when we were somewhere else. If we got it, if like on a day like today, we're super busy, two of us get up to the bathroom, we're like, ooh, nobody else go. Courthouse doesn't have enough restroom.
You big news out there, Mary?
Uh-oh.
Not gossip.
No, we're still trying to figure out what's gonna happen to this.
Yeah, with the newspaper?
Employees, something in the top.
Apparently, it's still going, it's going along, I guess.
Tomorrow, or the representative from the other companies is coming?
Okay, good. Get some direction there. It's all good. That is what it is, right? That whole industry's just changing so much. I'm not sure it's all for the good either.
When was the, the graduation glow special, was it the other day?
This week, this past weekend.
Yeah, it's in Friday's paper.
Yes, yes.
It was a Friday's paper.
Yeah, I'm not used to it.
I know, right, it's not Saturday, right?
The copy from the blue folder, sorry, for that West business.
It took me a minute, I'm like, it's Friday's paper, not Saturday's. So you should get it on Mondays, but I get it Friday, huh?
Well, I still have a lot of time, so they've gone the rest of a week. That was a copy from the blue folder, I had my copy, so you could just sign that one for the folder. What's so bad, when they changed it twice a week, or, you know, four weeks, came in. And it's just been a very hard adjustment for me to make, I'm still out there.
Brian, I got a question about the Lincoln project, too, for him.
The which project?
Lincoln statue.
See update on that?
Well, I talked to Rick Burris, more recently, he responded to the email we got about everything, and he never heard back. But it's, it's, I mean, they're gonna ship it, but we, you know, got a confirmation, it's on the way, but- If he stole the boundary, or it's on a truck coming here, I don't know.
Down at Port, that's weekend, I think it's on, living in town.
Okay.
But he wasn't talking to-
Some of it, where he spoke was actually down more in front of the sheriff's office.
There's a lot of debate about the location. So, Dylan Pruitt swears it's on the corner down there.
Not, but not by, 'cause I always thought it was closer to his house, where he lived, where, what I found.
Eric Anderson said it's where that house is, there'd be a church there, and he-
Across the street, it was like that.
Yes.
So there's an ongoing debate on which place.
It's like an old brick house.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause some guy came in from, I remember covering that. And they were sitting on Anderson, it's kind of funny, they were, this guy from Topeka, he was a retired minister, kind of Lincoln scholar, so, and this correspondent from the Topeka capital. We're just sitting there on Anderson's, or Anderson's porch. Anderson's, where am I?
Anderson's on the corner?
On the corner, but he was the next house, too.
Uh, where?
So, he was the next house one to the east, or west.
I thought she was on the west end of the block.
No, so Anderson's on the corner of Fifth Street.
Okay.
The next house, he also owns, it's like his workshop inside of it.
An update of the treasurer's office and all the projects you have. All right, guys, we gotta stay on task, it's twelve eleven.
Church, where the.
Go ahead.
Oh, is that where they went?
So, right now, plasters are coming Thursday. Uh, if it rains tomorrow, they're gonna come tomorrow. Uh, Thursday and Friday, they may be pretty close to being done. And then from there, we will start to build walls. Uh, air units are supposed to be shipped today. Uh, I haven't seen them yet, but as soon as they get here and the plasters get done, we'll start drop selling and, uh, put in our air units. Uh, electrical for the upstairs part of all of that is done. Uh, we still have home runs, which is just the line going back to the breaker box that will tie in downstairs. And so, that won't be near what the upstairs was, but, uh, and then flooring. And, uh, I don't know, I can't, we don't have our windows yet. Windows should have been here, uh, last week, uh, to this week, so.
You're talking about the hallway, the, the cutout windows?
Yeah, and I said last week, this week to next week, the windows are supposed to be here sometime during that time. They wouldn't give me a date, they just said four to, uh, six weeks. So, they should be coming either this week or next week, according to them. And then, as soon as we do that, I'll go ahead and open that up. There's no reason or madness to me leaving that in there, other than that, uh, we don't get any of our dust out there. So, it's more of a dust shield, but it is ready to come out. It's, uh, cut all the way through and ready to just pull out there. Uh, it's in no danger of hurting anybody or falling out, but it's ready. So, that won't take too long.
And the plasters are adding paint, pigment to their plasters, so it'll be painted.
We're trying to catch that match to that paint color.
Nice, that's a one step.
And, uh, we can do that anywhere that they do it, if we just have the color. So, if we like that color that's in there and we want to continue that in the hallway, then we could just have them, uh, put that into that mix. And then, we don't have to paint. So, that'll make it a little easier to do.
It's just gonna be a gray, like a gray, it's a, I would call it an off-white, but it's got a gray tone to it.
What is it called, shark?
Shark, uh-huh.
Lighter than this wall in here?
Yeah, it's a slight bit lighter.
A bit lighter.
But kind of the same tone. And then the flooring will look like, um, it'll have like a marble tone to it too, so that it kind of ties in with the marble and the rest of the warehouse, so.
As far as, uh.
You're running plenty of power through, you think you've got the power covered pretty good.
Oh, we've got power covered, good now.
Yeah.
So, in other words, what we, what we're gonna do to help out a little bit, whether it helps or not, we'll split, uh, each, each circuit will be split between two twenty amp breakers. And one will be a, a bone plug and one will be a gray. We'll try to tell them to leave the gray for IT and use the bone for anything you want, whether it's a heater or whatever.
Coffee maker.
Yeah, and then that way, if anything trips, it'll be on that one and all the computers should stay on all the time now. And they'll be on battery backup anyway, but, you know, we'll still have some of those kind of issues where, you know, storm or something.
Space heater.
Yeah, but, uh.
We might not need space heaters with the new.
Yeah, and we should have gobs of that power now to, we, we pulled, uh, I think a hundred and forty amps away from everything up there. And we're going back with about a hundred and twenty. So, we, we still got one more spot that we, if we needed to pull something. But, I don't know if you guys were aware, like, when I change out upstairs on the third floor, when I change out them air units up there, we're pulling, uh, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty amps in just that third floor alone. With window units, we are now pulling twenty amps. So, all that power is now something we can use somewhere else and, uh, uh, separate back to separate breakers and stuff to help out on some of them, uh, issues that we were having.
Couple months ago, we had, because of the way that the printers were initially set up, they were all on one. And we actually kept tripping the breaker, and we didn't know that's what was happening because it was such an anomaly. And, um, so, we're fixing that by separating all of the printers out as well, so that will never happen again.
That way, you may lose one printer, but you're still always up and going.
So, based on that particular one, if we're doing plaster Thursday, Friday, window ETA, maybe the end of next week, are you thinking, what do you think is like a goal to wrap this project up? And I know everything depends on it, but just trying to understand that to then move on to the other.
As far as labor wise, we've got about two and a half weeks of labor. Now, as the material comes in, then we can kind of set dates from that. Definitely, once the flooring, you know, is ready to go, I would say that, uh, they've got about three days on flooring.
Awesome, so mid-June probably.
I hope so, I'm hoping.
It was funny when the December got thrown out at me, I was like, I haven't heard December before.
And I could have been dreaming.
Brian and I both looked at each other and said, where is December? Seriously, that's, that was mine, and I'm like, whoa, I haven't, I mean, I haven't been involved.
We didn't sign on for this.
I could have been, I could have been hoping or something, you know, I don't know what it was, but I, I should have thought, I seen that, but.
And I think office furniture, they were shooting for probably that first week in June.
Nice, so it's all gonna be.
So, it all should tie together, yeah.
I would say, yeah, realistically, probably July fourth, but.
And I know you're building the county attorney's desk, is that the last thing for her?
That is, uh, we, we've got a cabinet and a desk, and then she's got a punch list of just little things that, uh, we'll do. Uh, one is gonna be cutting the trim, but those are things that, and she's aware of that, we'll prioritize. Getting her desk is a priority, so within, by the end of the week, we'll have her in her office. And then, all those other little things, we don't want to walk out of there without having them done. But she will, uh, give us time to come back and, you know, tweak this or that. Uh, blinds and stuff like that, you know, there'll be some of those things that still go on up there. But after that, then that floor should be maintenance free for a long time.
And so, once you wrap up the treasurer, um, the appraiser, is that where you're heading next?
Yes, and, uh, we are in the process of, uh, Mike's been a very good help to me, and so, we're actually splitting. So, I'll be in one office while he's in another one, so that we can both be working together. And then, when we need to be together, we're going together on that. So, it's been working out pretty good.
So, has he started the appraiser then?
What's that?
Has he started?
We have started the appraisers, we've got, uh, some of the sheet rock on, we're waiting on electrician to move some wiring for it, so we can go ahead and sheet rock the rest of it.
Okay.
Uh, we are still waiting on approval for cutting the hole.
State.
You're waiting on us?
No, uh, waiting on, uh, state approval. Uh, I don't know if they located the, uh, statue yet or not, I was gonna look and see if I could find it out. But, uh, that is in, and so, there are, they're reviewing it. Uh, they didn't act like that would be any problem to go with, but, uh, then we can talk about that one too, and do it. And then, we're up in the courts for, uh, Joanie, there we go, yeah. And so, we, we, I led it this morning up there, and, uh, we will be painting, uh, the.
Question, um, you're in the courts, or, sorry, I didn't know.
Court over in Joanie's office.
Is she with Bria?
Yeah, she's with Bria, so she is next to the judge's office. We went up and did a judge's office when I first started working here, and she is the next one, uh, kind of south of his office.
Before we do that, have you started?
She's, we started a while back on her.
I, I would love if, if we're okay to put that one on hold right now, until we have a chance to kind of collaborate. Because I did a walkthrough with Judge Fresh and Judge Sontag, um, and Bria last week after she came to our meeting. And they have planned, I just don't want us to do something to then redo.
And that's kind of what we told her.
So, maybe, and then, the clerk had mentioned she was going, the wiring behind her paneling was concerning. So, you were gonna work with her on her office?
Yes, uh-huh.
So, is she after the?
One of those things where I'm doing the same thing that you're doing. I said, Joanie, we'll paint, but, well, I'm not gonna do nothing major in here because of the simple fact that if something happens up here and we do a remodel or something, then, you know, we're gonna find out that first before, you know, we do anything extensive into any. And we did the same thing with, uh, Judge Fresh. We went up there and I said, you know, we're not gonna do air units, so I'm gonna cram a window unit back in here. And you're gonna have that until we decide what's gonna happen here, because that would make a huge difference on what type of air we put in and stuff like.
And those are discussions I feel like we, we need to have to get in love with a plan.
Out yet, but I know I'm hearing about it, so I'm, I'm just telling them, let's wait.
So, the clerk, then you'll work with her after the appraiser?
Uh, yes. Uh, as far as, well, we're gonna do in there is just, uh, whitewash the walls, paint them up for, uh, they were, uh, had a lot of, uh, pictures and stuff on the wall that had been taken down for a long time.
So, the electrical in hers isn't like Connie's?
We're not doing any electrical or anything like that in her, oh, not, we're, in the clerk's office, yeah. We will, we will try to address anything that's a major thing right now. If there's, in other words, if there's a problem that you need something that has to be done, yes, but, you know, we're talking about the court clerk, right? But we're not gonna come in here and I'm not gonna add a plug to you until we know what's going on.
Sorry, no, I was talking about Michelle.
Okay, Michelle, I haven't heard about her yet.
Okay.
So, that's a new one on me, if she's got some issues, we can deal with.
Well, I thought you and her had been in conversation.
A switch, maybe?
I think more of a remodel or refresh, update.
We have been, yeah.
Well, and so, that's why I told you the other day, like, you're amazing, but like, you're only one person. And so, all of these projects, like, seem to be, that's why I think this, this conversation's good for all of us to know what's going on and, um.
And so, the difference is, if they're patient and they wait, then I'm okay. If, uh, we can't get too far ahead of ourselves, but as you see, I'm not scared to take on a lot at once. But we, we're that, we're at that point right now, we need to get one done to get caught up. And, uh, a lot of that was, uh, bringing on Senior Village, which is a great thing. That guy up there is, uh, gonna fill in just fine. Uh, John is, uh, really, let's keep him up there, 'cause, uh, he's doing things right, he's doing it hard and, uh, going all day and all night. You know, so, uh, that's a good thing for him. But, uh, I've been up there a lot with him, I was up there this morning to help him up and get things straightened out for some, like, the air units and stuff. It's always a fight, you have them helping you, and if they wouldn't touch the thermostat, they'd be okay. But they'll come and turn on the heat, thinking they're turning on air, and then they've got both of them fighting each other during this time, so. He's learning, he's getting there.
Awesome.
So, run that way too.
Do you want to talk a minute about the statue location we talked about?
Yes.
'Cause I originally thought to the east of the front entrance would make sense. And Brian's pretty smart, he, he had a couple of other things to point out, so I'll just, you're gonna talk to that.
I think, I think we can, uh, definitely get better, uh, you know, a better watch on it. I just worry about a statue being out there and something happening to it. But I think better lighting on the, uh, west side, the only problem is, we're gonna lose a tree.
But the trees do what?
I don't know, I don't know if you know me, but trees next to buildings are no good for nothing. Uh, and that tree was planted too big, too close, and it is now pushing our walls over. Uh, it's coming into our plumbing and stuff like that. So, even if we didn't move it for the statue, I would be asking, let's get rid of that. I think another thing it does is it opens our courthouse up. And I think that, uh, once we get everything, you know, kind of tied in up there in the front and cleaned up and stuff, I think we need to be able to see how pretty it is.
I had an idea, if we do that location, or whatever location is, if you run power out there for some reason, might be a way of also having like a spotlight on the front of the courthouse and.
And the statue.
And plus with the tree out, because one thing, those trees were really, at night, it was spooky dark up there. So, that's opening that up is gonna help the, the whole area. I mean, I hate, I hate getting rid of trees too, that I can see that.
Yeah, those, those roots are, they run on top, run around above the ground too, and so, there just, there's no grass growing. And they're, I didn't realize that you pointed out that wall was pushed in.
Yeah, that one, we, we took out our two already, haven't we? That were causing problems.
They're on the north side, so they're not really too shady.
But, uh, another thing is, you get that closer to the sheriff's office, which is open twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah.
So, maybe that helps, maybe it doesn't, but, and I don't foresee something happening to it, but, uh, you, you know, take every precaution you can.
Thank you. And Jack does have really good cameras pointing that way too.
All right, I got it open on that.
You have really good cameras that are pointing out, thank you for the update.
I think originally we talked about doing the statue thing, but by Juneteenth, but I don't think that's doable. I mean, I, I don't know, but this is, it's a may, it's a maybe.
Yeah, and have you heard any chip date or anything on this?
No, I just, yeah, I talked to Rick this morning, and they didn't get back, so I, by the end of the day, they should know more, all that stuff that I did.
All right.
Awesome.
That's, that's where I'm at.
That sounds good, that's exciting. You're gonna be in your space before you know it. Okay, thank you.
It's been great, we appreciate all of his work, that's for sure.
Oh, don't, that, that is not an issue to me.
Okay, uh, next, I put on here the historic and current tax sale property status. Um, just wanting, uh, to kind of outline the process, to know who, like, from beginning to end, what the process is, and then where we're at historically with properties. If you could kind of walk us through that.
Sure, so, for, for the entire tax process, okay. Well, I mean, the first thing obviously is identifying the properties that are eligible for inclusion, inclusion in the tax sale. Uh, the general rule concerning eligibility for tax sale is that the taxes and/or special assessments for any given year remain unpaid for a certain length of time. In Kansas, we collect those taxes and special assessments in rears. So, the first half of the, uh, the taxes are due, are payable on or before December twentieth, and the remaining one half are due on or before May tenth of the next year. Uh, the taxes and special assessments, if they are unpaid after May tenth, are monitored by the county treasurer, who then, um, perfects the county's dean, uh, via an exclusive internal sale, that she's the only one that, uh, has to attend. It's on the first Tuesday of September every year. It's a delinquent tax sale, is what it's called in the statute. And it is from the date of that internal delinquent tax sale that the calculations for tax sale eligibility are all determined. Uh, there's a set of statutes regarding the rights of the property owners to redeem the property prior to the filing of the tax sale proceeding, a judicial foreclosure tax sale proceeding. And those are governed by KSA seventy-nine dash twenty-four oh one et cetera. The judicial tax sale proceedings are governed by KSA seventy-nine dash twenty-eight oh one. So, the seventy-four, or twenty-four hundreds are redemption from the internal sale, and twenty-eight hundreds are from the judicial tax sale. There are four different categories of properties, and how long they have to be held before they can be included into a tax sale. If there is property that includes an abandoned building or structure, the property need only be held for one year from the date of that internal sale before it may be included in a judicial tax sale proceeding. Just for reference, at that point, the, those taxes have been unpaid for at least two years and four months. But it's shown as one year, uh, because number one, we're collecting in rears, and number two, the date isn't until September of the following year. the date isn't until September of the following year. Uh, this is the case for abandoned buildings or structures. If they are either delinquent, general, add a warrant taxes, or some special assessments, but not all special assessments. Uh, under KSA 79 2401A subsection C, the only special assessments that count are those that are in response to a petition or request of landowners. So in other words, the only special assessments that count are voluntary special assessments for things like benefit districts and road districts, things of that type. That definition then explicitly excludes, uh, inclusion of special assessments that are assessed due to inducence condition. Uh, so unmoed, uh, in, in, in Atchison County, the most common special assessments that I see anyway, at least even the tax sales, have to do with, uh, with unmoed, or with mowing done by the city, or with, uh, remediation work that's been done where they've torn down a building. Uh, those don't count, those special assessments do not count for this one year. Um, and further, it's, under the statute, it has to be a building or structure that's considered abandoned, not a property. So if you have a, a property that doesn't have a building or structure on it, it can't be abandoned. The abandonment is defined under the statute as a situation where there has been a failure to perform reasonable maintenance. Uh, there's no definitive way to know whether a property is abandoned, it's always a fact question. Uh, we generally work with the City of Atchison's code compliance people. Uh, and we also get a list of properties from the city where that person doesn't have, where there's no water service, and that's a pretty good sign that there's no living there. Um, if we're including properties that are, uh, after only one year, I also have required an affidavit, my son familiar with the property, and that's generally code compliance with the city, because they do check on them. Um, so if we're talking about delinquent properties, it would be the taxes and special assessments from 2020 that would qualify, those were bid off by the treasurer at sale in September of 2021. And one year after that, September of 2022. So we're in the period after September of 2022. There's another rule for properties that have both delinquent taxes and special assessments. And the general rule is those have to be held for two years from the date of that internal sale before they can do that with the taxes that are unpaid from 2019. Because those were bid off in September of 2020, two years after that, September of 2022. The most common one is properties that either delinquent taxes or special assessments, but not both, are eligible for judicial foreclosure only after three years. And, and so that will include all commercial properties, vacant properties, uh, vacant properties that have, or any properties that have only taxes due, but no special assessments. Uh, and also includes homestead, a separate statute also includes homestead properties. Uh, and for homestead properties, it could be either, uh, delinquent or special assessments, or, uh... So the general rule then is the taxes from 2018 are eligible for inclusion in the tax sale that's next to be filed. Those were first bid off in 2019, September of 2019, and three years from then, September of 2022. So those are the properties that we're, that we're working on right now. The way that we determine those properties, uh, the CIC system has a tax sale preparation report that, excuse me, that we run. And it gets exported to an Excel spreadsheet. There are at least two different reports that are available in CIC. There may be more because, uh, the access that I have is, for good reason, a little limited. But in the tax sale preparation, tax sale section, there are two reports, and one is a little more summary than the other. Um, so after we run that report, we go through them and remove properties that were in the prior tax sale and aren't finished yet. Um, search for any unusual conditions. For example, if there's one year of taxes owed in 2008 and nothing else, then we usually wanna do some investigation, find out why. We do have, uh, a dozen or so properties that, um, maybe have, again, that our taxes are not collected through the county, uh, that have unpaid solid waste fees from 2012 only. Uh, and we've not included those. And, and most of those are either exempt properties or railroad properties or something where the taxes are not collected through the county. I then provide that Excel spreadsheet to Roger Denton. Uh, he manipulates the data and produces a database that has, uh, the things that we're looking for. The full name of each owner of record, taxing unit, parcel number, quick reference number. There's a short legal description that's included in the CIC system, sometimes called clerk's legal, uh, that we, that's also included in that, uh, property address, there's a camera number, a camera number that's used by the razor's office, uh, owner's mailing address, and the amount of taxes and special assessments. And I forgot to mention, under the CIC report, you can calculate the interest to a specific date. And so when we do this, when we, uh, well, actually, we have to run the game later, for, for this initial one, we don't, we don't care about that. Maybe that's why I didn't mention. Um, Roger also then prepares the tax sale on the output checks for parcels that are pending applications for exemption. Uh, because he wouldn't want to include one of those, and you have the property determined to be exempt and have to take it out of the sale. The county, like the database is provided to the county treasurer, do the checks to make sure the taxes are still owed on the property, because sometimes they are paid, sometimes there are properties that have a payment plan, that sort of thing. Uh, and so some properties are removed at that point. After that's done, the database is sent to, or the list is sent to Keith Wilson for abstracting. And that's where we are right now.
Okay.
Uh, under their contract, they have 30 days to complete the, uh, their work on it. Uh, once the abstracting is complete, the, uh, we have to go back into our database, we don't send them the database, we send them the, the list. Uh, we have to go back into the database, we have to enter the complete legal description for each property, instead of just that truncated, uh, CIC one. We have to verify if there are any of the claimants, any of the defendants, potential defendants that, uh, are in pending bankruptcy, uh, check for pending plans with the county treasurer, check for condemnation or litigation involving, uh, any of the properties. Check, uh, if there are federal agencies that show up on the abstracting list. They have special rules for redemption, in fact, they're one of the, they're maybe the only, they're the only one I can think of that has a right of redemption after a sale. So after the, the tax sale is finished, uh, the federal government can actually obtain the property by paying in the amount of that bid. And those redemption periods can run from 120 days to a year, depending on what agency's involved. But we just need to make sure we note those. The requirement in the statute is that county is to join the owners or supposed owners of the real estate and all persons having or claiming to have any interests therein, or there too. So it was in the statute, so we try to include everybody that, uh, we know is an owner of record. Those names are in the, uh, the public record. It happens frequently that somebody has deceased that owns property, and there have not been probate proceedings. And in that situation, we're, uh, we're sort of guessing if we're trying to, we want to be proactive and name as many people as possible. We don't always know enough about familial situations to know whether all the heirs have been included. Not all the heirs are always mentioned in obituaries, if there's any sort of family. I don't, I guess I won't go into it any further, but there are some reasons why obituaries aren't complete or accurate. Sometimes they also include people who aren't really heirs, as children, uh, that sort of thing. Um, we, uh, after that, we prepare a resolution to authorize the tax sale, and that goes on the, the Board of County Commissioners' agenda. And at that point, we need to rerun the CIC report, calculating taxes, interests, and penalties to the date of the anticipated filing of the petition, so that we can get accurate numbers in the petition, so that on the day that it's filed, it is accurate, has to be amount. Uh, I think that's better than saying, filing it on May 9th and saying, as of May 1st, the taxes were such and such. When we get the, after we get, and Roger also reworks that information, incorporates it into the database for us, because he's very good at that. Once that's done, we have to calculate the court costs that we're going to request of the court charge. Uh, that is typically, has typically been $400 plus 5% of the delinquent taxes and special assessments as of the date of filing. Uh, we don't change the court costs based on, uh, the date. So that's a fixed number, even though the taxes and special assessments number will change every single day. We don't change the court costs, just to keep things a little simpler. Uh, I prepare a, an application to redeem for each parcel of property that's produced by the treasurer's office after the filing of the case. So that they have a form or a PDF they can pull up and print out for each one of the properties. Uh, we draft the petition at that point, listing, uh, every one of the claimants that are in there, all the lien holders. Uh, and those petitions are generally filed within 30 days after the return of all of the title work. Uh, the petition has to be filed electronically through the court's eFlex system, which requires that yours truly manually enter the name and address of every claimant into the, uh, court's eFlex system. Uh, we have to, after we file, prepare an individualized summon for every individual claimant that was listed in the eFlex system, and that's done through the computer system that the court has. And defendants are given, uh, depending on who they are and where they're located, federal government gets longer. General rule is 20 days, uh, somebody who's served outside the state of Kansas is 30 days. I need to hunt down an attorney who's willing to accept appointment as guardian of light in a military attorney. Brett Swine has done that for, uh, the last several tax sales, and he's no longer, um, here. So, uh, John Kurf filled in, I have a copy, if he's willing to do it for the next one. Once the petition is filed, we have what I call first date orders, I don't know what else to call them. Uh, that's a motion to appoint a guardian of light in a military attorney. You can't take a judgment against a person who's on active duty in the military without, uh, that person being represented by counsel. If there are people that we know that are in the military, we have to go through a process under the, uh, it used to be called the Soldiers and Sailors Civil Relief Act, it's now called the Service Members Civil Relief Act, I believe. Uh, we have to go through a process to give permission from their commanding officer for them to be available to deal with this. We haven't, well, it's not common that we have military defendants, uh, but it, it has happened. We have to file a motion to fix and apportion the court costs, because the court has to approve that, because we're going to include the court costs in all of those redemptions that, well, we talked about before and we'll talk about it a, a moment later. And there's also a motion, uh, for an order to direct the county treasurer to quit accepting only the taxes on the delinquent properties. We always have this, it's always a few days after the filing before that part gets done. And there's always a couple of people that pay their taxes in that time, and they do not have to pay the court costs, um, until after she's served. And then we also, we coordinate that, so we're not serving her at noon and then having it 1:15. So, you know, before they had a chance, we try to do it on a, um, close of business, so that they're ready for it. we always have to have a discussion about the redemption process with the treasurer and court of the district court. I think we've gotten that worked out fairly well. It's a several step process, as I mentioned, if we prepare the, uh, application to redeem ahead of time. If someone comes in wanting to redeem the property, the treasurer prints out the write page, Phil completes the application, uh, to redeem by entering the name of the person that's actually making the payment. The person making the redemption is given the signed application to redeem with the instructions that they get to the court of the district court, where they have to pay the court costs. So they pay the taxes to the register of deeds, they pay the court costs to the court of the district court. Uh, the treasurer always emails me when those are done, and then through the court's eFlex system, I get a notice from the court when one comes in and, um, try to make sure those are all paired up. It always happens that there are a few that don't go pay the court costs, but do make the payment for the, uh, for the taxes. And we sometimes have to track them down, make sure those court costs get paid, and explain that we're going, still going to sell your property if you don't pay the court costs. As those, we have to track the redemptions as they come in, and we prepare an order of dismissal for each parcel as they redeem. Uh, we also need to track the court costs that are paid to the court of the district court, so. Also then, once it's filed, we usually try to sweet talk the register of deeds and/or the county attorney or any other departments that have the big copiers, because we have to print dozens of copies of that petition, because, uh, every claimant will need to get a paper copy of it. Uh, we print those two pages per side, and print on both sides of the paper, so we have four pages on each physical sheet of paper to save paper, uh, but it takes, uh, hours to do that printing. And, uh, so we don't generally wanna do it while they're working, so that they're not off, not, so it doesn't interrupt everything. If there's any property that has a federal agency involved, we have to prepare a service packet for them. Um, so for example, an IRS tax lien, and those are fairly common. Uh, service has to go to the IRS field office where the tax lien was issued from. Uh, it has to go to the US Attorney's Office at one of the federal courthouses in Kansas, either Spigot, Kansas City, or Wichita. And one has to be sent by certified mail to the Department of Justice in Washington DC. And the federal government has 60 days to answer after the last step in that process. So we have to keep track of, of that to make sure they get served early on. Uh, state agencies are somewhat similar. Uh, the state agencies, we give notice both to the agency that's involved and to the Kansas Attorney General. Um, typically, I personally serve an assistant attorney general on a trip by, to Topeka, but it could be done by certified mail. It's just that- It's just that sending a summons and a petition, they might be interested in half a dozen tracts or something and then you're sending them a ream of paper that they might not actually want. And, but anyway, we prepare that so we're ready to get them served. I prepare a shell, there's a shell affidavit for service by publication, prepare a notice of suit, file an affidavit, and prepare an affidavit of mailing. The affidavit for service by publication, when people are served by publication, not served personally, we have to show that we've made reasonable steps to try to find them and use due diligence to try to find them. So we start the affidavit at the beginning, every parcel is listed in there and then if we don't get service on it, we explain what we did to try to get service so it will be in the affidavit when the time comes for that. Prepare an information packet or just really update the information packet from prior sales and make sure it's on the county's website. Also prepare service packets for each city. There's, there are always properties in which, Escoda, Lancaster, and the city of Ashes always have properties out there. Here on, not so much. But anyway, and make sure that those get served and checked to make sure that I have the name of the city right. Also do the same for every bank or lien holder. We have to prepare certified mailings for all defendants with addresses located outside of Ashes and County. They could be served personally if we want to send, if somebody lives in Topeka, we found that it's easier to try to send it by certified mail than to send it to the Shawnee County Sheriff and ask the Shawnee County Sheriff to serve. Not all counties are able when it comes to doing service and process. Some of the smaller counties did, but a lot more effort into it than bigger counties in my experience. And then we try to find, we try to serve everybody. We take over dozens of summonses to the sheriff's office and a huge stack of petitions and they do their work. Keep track of those when those are served, they come back either to the clerk of the district or to me. Keep track of the green cards from the service by certified mail. We discovered during COVID that the post office wasn't having to sign those green cards anymore. I don't know whether that's still the case, but sometimes we would get them back, the green cards back, there wouldn't be anything on them. So the statute requires for service that we have to file something that shows to whom it was delivered and the date it was delivered. And so that's why we used a commercial courier service last time because the post office, because of COVID, wasn't, wasn't having those returned. As I mentioned, we need to monitor the summonses that are returned or are unclaimed. If we mail them out, they come back. If it's refused, that generally counts as service process. We have to do the process to mail another copy of it and that counts, but very few of them are refused, they're just unclaimed. And so we don't know whether we have the right address for the defendant or not. We try to determine an alternate address for each of those people and then we have to obtain it from the clerk through the eFlex system, a second summons, called an alias summons, for service and go through the process again of requesting service and letting the sheriff or trying a different certified mailing address or courier to do service. When we're trying to locate those claimants, we just do what people would ordinarily do, use Google. There is a database that we have access to that we can check that is sometimes pretty good at finding people, particularly people that have just moved. Talk with law enforcement, they sometimes have contact with people. We do deal with city staff and their code compliance officers. There are some community members that I frequently ask. That's, that's what we do. And for any person upon whom we cannot give personal service, we will rely upon service by publication, which is allowed under the statutes, but we have to show that we've made reasonable efforts to try to serve them. After the lawsuit is filed, but not immediately after, we find, we have to publish a notice of suit, which would be at the Daily Globe. And this is a full-page publication, usually maybe more, sometimes more. We don't file it initially because there are some people that will just, if they're easy to find, easy to serve, they will, I get payment made and I'm going to take them out. And I can't tell you every time you have a publication, I get calls saying, from somebody saying that they paid after the first publication and that I should have taken them out before the second publication or the third publication. Connie can attest that I rate people or making those, those calls and maybe even calling you, I don't know. Within seven days after the first publication, we have to mail a copy of the notice of suit to each of the owners or landholder, landowner, lien holders whose addresses are mentioned in the affidavit for service by publication. That doesn't count as service process, but it is required in order to get service by publication. That affidavit has to get filed with the clerk of the district court. And then there's an affidavit of publication generated by the Globe, which also has to be recorded. There are always one or two cases where someone files an answer and those answers can range from you never be able to get a tax statement to I paid the taxes or some other reason And how we deal with that depends on what the specific answer says. Sometimes they're just saying they'll be paid, they need more time. And we're generally able to accommodate those unless we're getting to the very end. So, because we don't want to delay a tax sale for an additional 30 days to give one person an opportunity to save up enough money to pay their taxes. When we get to the point where we're close to the getting service on everybody we think we can reasonably find, I prepare a motion for judgment on the pleadings and a motion for default judgment filed with the court. Get the serve notice on everyone who's filed an answer or otherwise appeared in the proceeding, file the certificate of service with the court, set a hearing date on that, put the judge at the clerk of the district court and serve that motion. At that point, we once again ask the treasurer's office to recalculate the taxes, interests, and penalties up to the date of the hearing on the motion for default judgment so we'll have, again, the correct number in, in the judgment as of that day. Prepare the journal entry of judgment circulated to all the attorneys that have been involved. And usually they're just signing off on it for form, the state, their attorneys, like the Department of Labor, somebody that has a lien against, because of a judgment against somebody who collected an appointment that they shouldn't have, they might have a lien, the judgment not appearing. And they will just generally sign the affidavit. The US Attorney's Office also verifies that we followed the procedure to get the service process on the federal government. Occasionally, there are properties that have an issue that has to be resolved with a contested hearing. And if those happen, we have to find time to get them scheduled and have it here. At that point, we obtain judgments and judgment. And it's approved by the court. There's no requirement that we wait any specific period of time other than that we have to have the judgment done before we can request an order of sale. For most actions, you'd have to wait 14 days before you can request an order of sale, but that's not the case with tax sales. So, and that order is signed by the clerk of the district court, not by the, not by a judge. At that point, typically set the date for the tax sale. The date has to be at least 30 days after the first publication of the notice of the sale that will get published. We have to clear that date with a bunch of people to make sure that the warrant hall is available, that they don't have something else going on. Clerk of the district court has to be available, the treasurer, the sheriff, because he's an auctioneer, needs to be there. GIS, because Roger's pretty involved in the process. IT department, because they set up our, the microphone and the screens, et cetera. So we have to make sure that all of those are available and that I don't have a day that's a bad day for them. Don't want to do them in the last week of the month because the treasurer's office is stocked in the last week of the month. And there will be, there have, I don't know if there has to be, but the treasurer has been kind enough to always be there and have someone else there, at least two people for the sale. And then we have to, after we have a sale date set and we get that order of sale, we have to publish the notice of the sale on the Globe once a week for three to 17 weeks. For the sale itself, we use the Civic Connect system, I think it's called within CIC, for pre-registration of bidders. Through an online entry form that we've developed, we have people enter all their information, name, address, and all their contact information, telephone numbers, email. By statute, the, there are certain people that are not allowed to bid at sales and the big one is people who owe delinquent taxes in the county. And so after those come in, the treasurer has to look up every one of them and make sure they don't own property that has delinquent taxes on it. And part, as part of the registration, we ask people to put in the name exactly as they want it on the deed. I should probably quit doing that because it doesn't seem to work very often. People don't seem to understand what they're, what we're asking for, but I'm hesitant if, if a person that I know is married, just wants property in her own name, to not at least tell them, you might want to consider putting those in joint tenancy so you're not making a problem if you die.
Let me start that because people were front buying for bet, deadbeats years ago.
We don't know, yeah.
I think that's what's wrong.
Yeah. And so when the registrations come in, we all, I also look up to see if they own other properties so that if somebody is Joe A. Smith, that we try to use the same name as they've used in other, in other instances so that there's some consistency. Corporate status, we require that they be registered with the Kansas Attorney General to be a bidder at the sale. You'd be surprised at how many people don't know the name of their LLC, get it wrong, off by a few letters at least. But we check those, make sure that they are in, that they are eligible, make sure that they haven't forfeited their corporate status. And then, once the county treasurer's approved it and I've approved or entered all the rest of it, we send a confirmation email to the bidder. This is something that in the past, I've done the pre-registration, but we run into a problem with people showing up at the day of the sale wanting to register and just simply I can't, I can't do it that day. And so, but I'm not sure of the clerk and the treasurer, I don't remember how we did it, but the treasurer was actually down at the sale and, oh, it was Mark maybe?
Mark and Blair were sitting there and they were checking everything online. So we were able to do it that way.
So on the day of the sale, and we're, I, my preference would still be to have the data entered on to, into the CIC system. It generates a number and we use those for the bid numbers. And so ahead of time, we print out bidder cards. We prepare bidder, bidder affidavits because each person that purchases has to sign an affidavit declaring that they don't have an interest in the property or did not have an interest in the property or the right to redeem the property prior to the sale. And, and then also, those are prepared as the sale goes along. You would think that we could wait till the end of the sale and then print those from the database, but you can't because if somebody bids on property two and then they want to leave, they're demanding that the world stop and cater to them. So we, the treasurer's office and the court's office have graciously been available, had enough people there, we've got people that are collecting money from people as they're leaving when their property is, has passed or has, has been sold. I mentioned that IT sets up the screens and the microphone, the treasurer is present on the day of the sale to vet the bidders. The court's office helps with those affidavits for sure. We have, we put the bids through, using Google Docs on one of the screens so that people can see what the bid was and that helps because sometimes if I'm writing down, I don't remember what the last bid was and if I write it down wrong, or it gets entered in the computer wrong, somebody will let us know. And we seem to have the kinks worked out. We didn't use that at the last sale, but we are going to because it did work fine. There are always, always issues that come up on the day of the sale, and I can't even describe what they all are. So, of course, we're all there to deal with them. Prepare a return for the sale. The sheriff has to sign, file with the clerk of the district court. The payments are made to the sheriff and the sheriff then deposits those with the clerk of the district court. We have to wait for at least a week or so after the sale to make sure that all the checks clear. We provide, I prepare a motion for confirmation of the sale. That motion gets filed with the court, we have the same hearing date, as you've noticed all parties. In that motion for confirmation, we have to deal with the federal redemptions, we have to deal with excess funds. Sometimes, in this last sale, there was one property where the amount of the bid exceeded the amount of the camp, the county's judgment plus court costs. It's usually a few more than that, this last one it was only one. Because that excess does not get kept by the county, it gets returned to the prior owner. They have to prove who they are and what their title to the funds and sometimes there are rarely issues with that. We have to prepare the sheriff's deed then. If there are properties with federal liens, we do not prepare those or at least we don't send them to the sheriff to sign them until after that redemption period has, has expired. In those, in those instances, we have to prepare a certificate of purchase that the sheriff signs instead of a sheriff's deed. And then that's when I contact the owners who I think might want to And then, that's when I contact the owners, who I think might want to have their property in joint tenancy, and who have corporate names misspelled, to make sure that they don't want us to issue a deed to a corporation with a misspelled name. The sheriff deeds have to be signed by the sheriff, and for some reason, the statute requires that those be signed and verified by the clerk of the district court herself. They can't be done by a notary, or it can't be done by a deputy clerk, so we, they have to schedule when they're both available, a date that they're both available, and I tend to try to print the, the date that they signed it in the deeds, so it'll save a little bit of time. We have to calculate the amount, the number of deeds, and how many pages they are, to get the fee for the registered deeds office. The final motion would be...
Does that change with these lots' capabilities now?
Probably, yeah. I think they could be signed with... Well, you know, I don't know. Are, on foreclosures, or does anyone have any ideas like that? I don't know why you couldn't.
Prices or cost states are typically found authority on it, so.
You know, I don't know. I should ask on...
There would definitely be a process.
It definitely would speed up the process. I don't know why you couldn't. Well, okay. It might make it more expensive, though, to record, because I hope we have to record the page that shows the signatures being, electronically, which is way ahead of the figure of orders. I'll, I'll see what other counties are doing. Yeah, it's worth checking, and see what other counties are doing. Then we have to verify our accounting with the clerk of the district court, because throughout the proceedings, every person that redeemed the property should have paid court costs to the registered deeds. We know what the amount, or at least, I think I know what the amount is they should have paid. This last tax sale, that matched exactly with the amount that was paid. We know exactly what was paid, what was bid at the sheriff's sale, and that amount has to bear, has to match with the clerk of the district court's accounting. The issue that's come up this year is there is an adjustment that's shown on the books and clerk's office, and that's from when they switched over from their old system to the Odyssey system. And I can't get it to balance, and I hate to just say, well, we'll just take that money, because it will show up some other time, and I hate to not deal with it, because then the clerk's office is going to be holding money for the next twenty years. So, we switched to a new computer system, so maybe you'll wonder why we didn't deal with it. That, that's where we are from the last tax sale, that's the step we're at. Once the accounting is done, I prepare a motion and order to disperse funds, and dispersal is from the sale proceeds, after payment of recording fees, and and taking out the excess funds. We do get paid back for case expenses, that comes from court costs. The amount is never the total amount that, that we spent, but it's, it helps a little. And the property where they bid, that are sold, that, that money goes to the treasurer, who has to assign it pro rata across the, maybe you can describe better how you assign it, because it's not, it's never the, it's rarely the full amount of the backs.
Right. So, I tried to distribute it. Came up with a formula, I thought that's the last one that we did, that kind of dispersed it evenly based on the amount of taxes owed. So, I figured out what the overall taxes owed were, and then, so, each property, what their percentage was, and then they got that percentage applied to those taxes.
And then, also in that process, it cancels the taxes from prior to the sale, even if they're not paid, so that the next owner, again, doesn't get delinquent tax notices, or doesn't look up their property and say rent taxes are still owed. There are properties that do not sell. The, has the court to issue an order for the sheriff to issue a deed to the county, and the county pulls those pursuant to statute, and then can sell at a later date. There are some times, there are reasons to set aside a sale. I don't think we had any, yeah, we had one last time, because one property that had been redeemed was sold, because it was redeemed right before the sale. That's pretty uncommon, but if it comes up, if it comes up, then we'll deal with it. And, that's it.
So, right now, the properties that did not sell, do those just go back to 2020 and 2021?
Yeah.
Like, the, the 2019, like, everything with that tax sale is closed and done, and...
Well, it, it isn't, because we, as I said, we just divided over those, when we talk about that in the fall. There were maybe twelve properties then, there were three on this last one, and I have, I had that. There were eleven from that sale. There were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven of those were vacant lots, that did not have an address even assigned to, to them. At the same time, when we, when we get the accounting fixed, I want to file the motion in the 20CB14, asking the court to issue the same order for the sheriff to issue the same deeds, so, I'll be at the same time.
So, the 2018 is completely done. So, 2019's where we're?
20CB14 is the case number of the sale we had in 21, and then, 21CB54 was the one that we had in 22. So, yeah, those others are completely done. And then, and at that time, we were just vacating the judgment on those properties, because, well, we didn't really have a process or a way what, for us to, us to want to have the properties for the county to want to have those properties. Because it carries with it some responsibilities for mowing, and I guess it's not a big deal to provide the insurance, because we're providing it anyway, but here are some responsibilities going to be shared.
But the way it had been set up, so, if there were eleven properties after the tax sale, historically, I know there wasn't a process, but it used to be where, here, the city could choose if any of those fit with their land bank, but if they didn't want them, they still remained ours, right? They just sit there for the next tax sale, or?
The city tip, right. The, the city typically would purchase properties at the tax sale.
I remember that, yeah.
And, if that they had an interest in for their, for their land bank.
That was mostly strategic, too?
Yes, right.
To guide the purchase.
And I, I don't, I don't remember that we ever, that, that they requested or that that we ever even discussed the possibility of transferring those to them. We did have discussions about it, and there, there's a statute that allows for, in lieu of going through the process, that you can transfer the property for low-income housing and economic development. There's a few things. It still requires going through a process, just not the same process, and there were a couple of properties that we discussed using that for, but nothing really came through.
So, with the last tax sale, then, the properties are currently waiting to have an adjustment by the deeds office, so the clerk can balance, is that correct? Before you can prepare an order for dispersing of the funds? Is that where the last one hung up?
The, the deeds office isn't involved with that.
When you said Brian, I thought the system, is the clerk's office using another system than CIC, too?
Odyssey is, is the clerk of the district court.
Okay, that clerk, okay, sorry. I was trying to follow, so Odyssey's the, okay.
It's the clerk of the district court.
Got it.
So, we're, we're trying to find that adjustment. And if possible, that I'm wrong, I'm fully aware of that possibility, but they're reaching, they've reached out to the vendors who did their transfer from one account, from one system to the other, to try to find an answer, and I, I mean, I don't think it's going to be months or anything, but it may not be, maybe next week, something before we do it.
But it's already been months.
I'm sorry?
It's already been months, that you've been working on that. You told me September.
It has been. Well, September is the date of...
October, the sale was in October.
Right, but the adjustment was made when they transferred over, I think the date was September 22nd. September 20th, and it's eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-one cents, and that number doesn't match with anything that I can find in our database either. That just happened to be the court costs on some property, maybe put it there, but it doesn't have stood with any of it.
So, the clerk of the district court is reaching out to Odyssey on the conversion, to see if they find that amount? That will then clear it? And if it's not found in that, how do you clear it?
Well, I don't know. I, I, I don't think we want to take it, if we don't think it's ours. I think we would, we would just ask the court. And the court will also have to sign an order, and I don't know whether the court's going to sign an order that doesn't deal with all of the funds. But, that would be my suggestion, would be that we should do an order that says that the clerk should continue to hold it, because we don't, we don't claim it, we don't know whose it is.
So, I'm wrong, I'm wrong about the amount?
For the eight, yeah, the eight hundred. I don't know. Never run across it before, so I don't, I don't really know what, what the right thing to do is, but I know the right thing isn't for us to take it and just throw it in, and reimburse that for court costs or something, because that will... I think somebody will find it later. That's enough money, somebody's probably going to be looking for it.
Okay, so, to remedy it, then, we, we have the clerk sign it, or, sorry, the court sign an order for the amount, and then that property will be released?
Well, we'd have the court sign an order that did, for all of the accounting, so for all of the court costs that were paid in, and all of the, and we know that amount. I closed that spreadsheet.
Eight sixty-nine forty-one.
Well, the court costs that were paid in were thirteen thousand seventy dollars and twenty-six cents, and then the amount that was collected at the sale was sixteen thousand seven hundred fifty-three. And that, those add up to thirty thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So, I know there's a lot of people involved in this, but should we, would it be helpful to outline at time?
I, I know there's all these, like, needs to be three days, needs to be thirty days, like, all the, but to somewhat have a timeline of, like, events to where, where, I'm just wondering, because...
I, I thought we, we'll talk about that. I, I have the numbers wrong. Those two sets of numbers add up to twenty-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. If you add in the nine hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-one cents, the clerk of the district court has thirty thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty-seven cents on hand. So, if we did the order, but just include the things that we know about, or that we're sure about, the clerk's going to sell people that eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. We have talked about, and I've thought about it, too, on, if you want to, it's possible, I think, to set a date ahead of time for, at each stage, but the, the problem is, if you run across any hiccups, anything that's unusual, or that, it's hard to, it's hard to make changes. So, how long do we want to have for service and process? If we do that for, for filing at the end of May, and we have a hundred and twenty days for that, and then thirty-one days after that for judgment, and then thirty days for if we were, you're looking at having a sale the first week of December, or the end of November.
What'd you say?
I said, no, thank you.
And, of course, December is very busy for the treasurer's office.
Well, and I think it creates an issue having it in the last two-thirds of the year, anyway, because we're looking at deed. That created an issue for us this year, because those properties that were stole, sold are still in the previous owner's names, they're not in the new, they're not of the new owner's name in our office by record. So, that creates some confusion. We made sure that people received their tax statements, we went through the list and saw who the, who the winning bidder was, and sent them a tax statement, but there were still a lot of people that didn't know that they owed, it wasn't somebody else's name, there was just a lot of confusion created by that. So, I think we definitely work backwards from a gold date, maybe, well, you know, in August, September, at the very latest. I don't know, how much time do they need to get those deeds changed?
Well, part of the delay this time has been that the, the order to pay out doesn't have to be months after the sale, but it is, because we have that accounting issue. So, that, I mean, I wouldn't think, that wouldn't ordinarily be that long, but it would be, it would be, it would be sixty days after the sale, probably. So, I, you can set those times to be longer, I mean, if you set the, you can give them a hundred and eighty days for the service and process part. Or, there's also something I didn't talk about, that's sending, sending demands out before we file. We've done that twice, I think, I, I think it generates more abuse for the treasurer's office and for me, than it does payments, with people calling and, and complaining about...
What is that, and how does it work, I mean?
It's a letter sign, we're going to file a tax foreclosure of your properties on there, and schedules be on there. But the most that come are, are explanations to the treasurer about having competent staff is that it shouldn't be included on there, and then, after they get a little bit of education, they tend to acknowledge that it's possible, but they might not need the tax. So, I, 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 I don't know whether... I, I, I don't know whether you want to do that or not, but as I, we've done it a few times, and I think it's mostly more than payments, it's generated backlash. Seems to happen when I've notified, if I've seen something unusual on payments, on somebody showing up that gets the same reaction. And filing a case, then if you're able to, I can moncharge court costs on this, and if you make the payment, get it dismissed, then you're doing them a favor. And that, that's not how they see it. You send them a demand letter, or a warning letter. Like, I say demand, it's not really, it's not a.
But that's how they, and that is how they see it, though. I mean, it, it becomes a, yeah, like Pat said, it's just awful.
So I just want, while you're all sitting at the table, I have two things. One is with the, setting the date of the tax sale being such a burden as far as booking Memorial Hall, knowing their availability, the sheriff, the clerk, the treasurer, G I S, I T, courts, coordination, availability, not the last week of the month, like, wouldn't it be beneficial to everyone to have a standing date each year? In a time that works well, like, for your process? And then have a standing date on the books at Memorial Hall that this date is always, like, that way the timeline then is put back on everybody to make sure they hit that ti, that date, like.
There's, with all of those steps, though, there's always a glitch, or you have COVID, or you have something that comes up that is going to be, you're not going to be able to meet that day?
I will know that since Pat has been very diligent over the past, what, six, seven years? That this list is, you know, when I first became treasurer, this list was huge, and it was daunting, and it was absolutely a nightmare. This list is, is whittling down, and it is becoming a little more manageable. Now, your guys' resolution that you passed several years ago, I believe, is also assisting in that, helping to keep people current. And they're not becoming perpetually delinquent by only paying the most recent delinquent year. Because you did that resolution and flipped it around, and now we accept the payments for the most recent delinquent year, which in this case is the twenty-one year, so they're paying on twenty-one right now. And they're not able to keep themselves off of the tax sale by, by just, you know, kicking the can down the road.
Paying three years ago to the par and then leaving it.
Right, so I, I think going forward, this is going to continue to become a more well-oiled machine as, as, you know, as we get further into it, because we're going to have less properties on the list, and just be more familiar with the process, too. So I think we are really fine tuning it, even though there are glitches and there are hiccups and there's things like that, I think it is. So maybe it would be beneficial to go ahead and look at a target, just a month or two at least.
That way it's annually, and everybody's aware, like, and like he was saying about the properties in Limbo, like, they'll just have to wait until the next year. Like, at least you'll have that process, and yes, this property might not be on there, but the majority, or you are all revolving around that timeline, that'll make it easier.
The conics writers have a target month on here.
And then the public knows, and they don't have to ask us every time, and it's like, hey, it's going to be, yeah, or whatever.
Whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, that's right.
There is another potential problem in here, and that is that the, the abstracts have to be done within a certain period of time, or you're going to have a shift in ownerships that you can't verify. And that's why having them out there too far is, does become somewhat a problem. Because you need to have that and work that, and people trade properties. And there is a misconception that the taxes have to be paid to transfer property. That's not true. People transfer properties all the time without the taxes being paid, and then you don't have the right people notified anymore. And so you could find yourself in those kinds of situations. So I'm, I'm just telling you, there, it, it, it's easy to say, let's simplify it, but it's so complicated. And I can tell you, it's not every time, but often, we have somebody show up six months later, or eight months later, and say, wait a minute, I didn't get the proper notice, and I want to set this sale aside, and by that time, somebody else has already spent money on the property, and we're putting them at risk. So you just have all these unknowns out there that you're dealing with. I know, boy, we'd like to simplify it, but it is an ugly process.
No, I'm just trying to listen to everybody and hear that, you know, we have the seven annual tax sale, and if it's not good to have at the end of the year, the several months, like, we're in May, and we haven't scheduled one, like, we gotta, we gotta figure out how to make it so we know, I think. We always.
There is, there is one more thing to keep in mind. I know a lot of people think the purpose of the tax sale is to sell delinquent properties, but the other thing that it does, half of the properties pay their taxes. And that's what we're getting done, is we are getting all these properties to pay their taxes, and the penalties and interest associated with processing them. And that is as valuable as the sale itself.
Agree, yep. And then, once the sale's over, then can we have a understanding of how long it takes to balance? I guess, I think, you know, is it?
This is the first time that that issue's ever come up.
No, I know, but also, like, I don't have an answer when you ask about a prop, you know, so I just.
I've had an appraisal done, I mean, just to, I know, I don't know if I'm, I'm supposed to speak, but.
No, it's fine.
I'm trying to get a loan to improve the property, to put it back, get higher taxes for all of you and us. I had an appraisal done, I'm going to have to pay for another appraisal because I am waiting, which I didn't realize, and I guess my own fault. I mean, I bought a tax sale, I would recommend no one ever buy anything on tax sales. As a realtor, it's a nightmare. It is a nightmare, because personally served is not what is accepted for title companies, is not, just. I mean, in this situation, there were forms signed, but they weren't even notarized, so they weren't acceptable as being personally notified.
Is that the property on Unity?
Yep.
Yeah.
And so, and I know, I mean, I, I just feel like there's no urgency to any of this. And so I'm extremely frustrated, and I'm sorry you all are going to have to listen to me be extremely frustrated, but I know there's, you know, there's a big chance of buying a tax sale, but I, seriously. And I know Highland College has had multiple issues with properties that have been donated, or given to them, or they've purchased through tax sales, and now they're in a mess trying to get things straightened out that were not cleared prior to them taking possession. So again, it's just a frustration, it's a huge frustration.
Yeah, no, I, I understand where you're coming from.
I'm, I'm done, that's it.
No, I, I, I understand, I understand where you're coming from, so. But we didn't, to circle back around, we didn't resolve the, I, I'm expecting the the results from the abstracting to come in fairly soon. If you wanted to have a sale by the end of the year, that would be difficult, but it's really a matter of whether you're wanting or willing to have properties dismissed from the sale, because we don't get service of process quickly. Or if you're wanting to have the sale in, in February or March, there should be plenty of time for everything.
So this is one of the things I feel like I have to review my notes from, like, commissioner conferences in K A C, but is it not required that the county commission hold an annual tax sale? Because I felt like it was, I'm going to look through all my.
There, there's a statute that says that you, you can't not have them ever. I know in practice, there are not many counties that have sales every year.
And that, there may be some confusion from my, my well-attended sale on the, in September, too. I think sometimes that's misconstrued as the tax sale, because it's actually written in statute, isn't it, Pat? That it says, like, bidding off or something like that.
And it is, and it is a tax sale, and so, and there are always claimants that people that own property, you come in and say, well, wait a minute, I have three years to redeem the property after the sale. No, you have three years after that sale to redeem the property. And, but it says right here, the tax sale. And, yep, but that's the tax sale under twenty-four hundreds, not twenty-eight hundreds. So, chapter seventy-nine.
Because that statute is worded, and it makes it sound like Jack's up there, you know, selling the properties off. But it's really just a.
Can't see for years, it was every two or three years we had a tax sale. I've bought property with years.
Yeah, no, I found, so like, I, other counties, we had this discussion about it. And Wyandotte County holds three tax sales throughout the year, the same time every year. Dickinson County has had a tax sale annually, every April first of May. Like, other counties are definitely doing it, I'm just.
A lot of those counties also use a third-party agency.
Yeah, Wyandotte does.
Yep.
These are rolling processes, so if some of those are good, they just do them.
Yeah, I could see that if you was having three a year, where they have enough properties there that if they just missed one, you would only be four months later.
And they start cracking down some bad neighborhoods, you know, gosh, probably seventy years ago, they start getting real serious. So, there's a lot, a lot behind that whole story.
Yeah, they use it for more than just a, a tax sale, it's a, a neighborhood mediation, et cetera.
Yeah.
Well, I know it's a hot topic for constituents, so, I know you get questioned about that, so it's not just me.
The only thing I worry here is when we're going to have it, is, you know, everybody's like, get them.
That's what we're trying to.
Yeah. But the process is compromised.
I mean, I think, I think we could reverse engineer it to have those on, to have it on whatever time of year you want to have it. We really got thrown off, as you know, with, with COVID. But we, we could have it as an annual process, whatever time of year you want to have it.
So start to finish, what's it usually take? Is it a six-month process, is it an eight-month process? I mean, you're speaking.
Thirteen-month process.
Yeah, it's dependent, well, well, as Connie noted, we, you know, we, we had well over a hundred, and what, that takes, take a lot, took, took a lot more work to get service of process on it. We've got less than eighty in abstracting, and, you know, that's probably going to be less than sixty when we get to filing, with people making payments and.
Probably only thirty or forty that'll make it to the sale, really, if even.
Yeah, so, yeah, six, six months is, is definitely enough time. But if you want to have that to be eight months, so that you end up having your sale in February instead of in December, or in March.
That probably makes sense.
I think so, too, I think we need to just come up with a process and how it works, but after listening to you, if the timeline's that long, we might as well wait till the first of next year. I mean, to not hit the end of the year like you requested, but it's just, we have to have a plan, and.
I don't think the end of the year is good for anybody, I mean, not just my office. You guys are busy with elections, I mean, there's, you know, potential for many different things that are occurring.
But even the transfer, the deed's over, like you were saying earlier, to transfer them into the new owners' names from the tax sale, it'd be easier to do it not in October, because you don't have them.
What's the ideal month?
Tax statements go, tax statements go out in November, you know, a little bit before. I don't have an ideal month, that's not my.
Well, February or March would be better.
Probably, because then it would give us time to still.
January, not good or good?
It don't matter. I mean, it's not terrible. But yeah, I mean, I would say definitely.
Memorial Hall is busy, after school sports, but during the day.
You should be able to get there.
And the walking is usually all the.
Just the walkers, you have.
Yeah.
The walkers weren't, they, we had walkers during the day of the sale. Didn't bother anything, I don't think it bothered them.
We have walkers, we have walkers when we do our election, our election worker training down there, we have walkers. I try and pull some into.
Might get a bit from walkers.
February's probably not bad, March's probably not bad.
I don't think that they were January or March.
Okay, um, Pat, did you have any input? I know we asked for it by last Tuesday, but on the R F Ps that you had reviewed?
Yes.
I think so.
There, there are requirements in there, but the, the, the two that you sent for Gary and Martin Kenny are actually nearly identical. Both of them have a requirement for insurance requirements that I think you probably don't need. They have a general liability insurance of at least two million dollars, professional malpractice insurance of at least four million dollars. Smaller, I talked to my malpractice carrier, I can't even apply for four million dollars in coverage unless I convince them that I'm doing things that could generate four million dollars in claims, because they want to avoid the possibility of coercion. Faking malpractice to generate claims. Also.
Only insurance.
Right, like.
As county counselor, the, my malpractice, this is, excludes what I do as county counselor. I covered my cake. Professional malpractice, professional liability coverage. I don't think any of those are necessary. Workers' compensation, liability insurance, general liability insurance is for personnel injury to clients operating, operation. Those are pretty rare for any lawyers. I've never had a, I've had thirty years for something like that, slipping along the premises, I guess, or something like that. I've never had a, I had one workers' compensation claim, and that was my daughter.
Collusion?
Got, got hit by a car, and got hit by a car. So anyway, I, I don't think those are, those are necessary. There's, so I, I would take those out if you want to go through the process.
Okay.
I would suggest, I would like to have executive session on personnel.
Okay.
Maybe to discuss, you know, what we need to.
And how many minutes? Do you want to do it?
Uh, we, we do it whenever you want to do it.
Okay, how long?
I, I, whatever it says, I don't know, fifteen minutes.
So we have several, but I'll get that one. Okay, are we good with waiting on your commitment policy?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering, okay, so we're going to have executive sessions, and non-elected, the first one. Have forty-five minutes, let's start with thirty.
Thirty minutes?
Do thirty minutes.
With who?
Commission, H R, Finance Director, and Chair.
What is a fifteen-minute first?
What's that? What's that, fifteen?
Twenty is fifteen-minute first.
Well. Okay, um, yeah, let's do, let's do that. Let's do the non-elected personnel commissioners and county councilor, fifteen minutes, and H R Director, please. And Finance Director.
So what, what are your, what are your four sessions for? Let's for Stacy.
Well, so that one's attorney-client, twenty minutes. Though, they're all non-elected personnel. Except this attorney-client with Stacy. So let's do attorney-client with Stacy first, and then she.
Fifteen minutes?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed executive session. Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed executive session. At one fifty PM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of the executive session at two oh five PM. And the commissioners are in the EOC one-zero-four-four-three US Highway one fifty, or US Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be three commissioners, county counselor, finance director, and HR.
Second, it's Stacy.
Oh, Stacy, I'm sorry. I missed that one.
Okay, also, it's been moved to second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Can I confirm that we're in this one with Stacy? Oh, sorry, are they supposed to be in this one with Stacy? That's what Eric said.
That's, I said, that's what I was, should they be in on this one? Probably not. Finance director, finance director. Doesn't matter, what are we discussing?
The, the non-elected personnel, county counselor and commission and HR, and HR, sorry. I know, we got, I think.
Fifteen, commission, HR.
Pat.
Finan-, Pat, finance director. I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed executive session at two oh five PM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of the executive session at two twenty PM in the EOC one-zero-four-four-three US fifty-nine highway. And those present will be commissioners, HR director, finance director, and county counselor. Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Ten minutes. Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue with this executive session for ten more minutes. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Next weekend, start.
No, can we jump back in for just five minutes, please? Thank you.
You saying?
I, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we go back in the previous executive session for five more minutes. Same parameters. I'll second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. And it's the same. Slow down.
Slow down a little bit.
Nobody. Non-elected personnel, forty-five minutes.
Forty-five?
HR, finance director, commission, and sheriff.
Okay, is he present?
Yep, he's out there waiting.
Non-elected, right? You said non-elected?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed executive session at two thirty-five to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of the executive session and... What?
Three twenty-seven, I believe, this one you should come out.
Three twenty-seven?
I'm actually, we have forty-five minutes.
PM in the EOC one-zero-four-four-three US Highway fifty-nine. And those present will be the three county commissioners, HR, finance director, and the sheriff. Pat? Pat wasn't included, so he left. Is that correct?
It's been moved to second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero. Okay, one more.
Oh.
Sorry, do you have a mic?
I think I'm gonna leave.
HR, finance director, commission, twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes?
Yeah, sure, sorry.
I got it, Dave.
I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recessed executive session at three twenty-eight PM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of the executive session at three forty-eight PM in the EOC one-zero-four-four-three US Highway fifty-nine. Those present will be HR, finance director, the commission, with Pat.
Uh, no, just...
Nope, okay. HR, finance director, and the commissioners. Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes three to zero.
Over the years, I've heard the stories and those searches weren't, didn't use it very good.
What do you want, a few more or not?
No, I'm good.
I need to go.
Okay.
I'll pick this up next week, I guess.
Okay.
So adjourned?
I'm looking, yep. Public comment, I don't know. All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, second. Aye.
Seconded, all those in favor say aye? Aye, passes three to zero.